Council members, please take your seats. I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. At this time, I would ask all persons to please shut off their cell phones. Will the Clerk please take the roll?
Here. 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 Here.
Present. Present. Is there a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. At this time, I'll ask Scoutmaster Steve Barento and Troop 66 from Garden City, please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its really popular and gorgeous stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Troop 66. You did a great job. We appreciate it. Next, we have public acknowledgements and commendations. Evan Kirschenbaum, Esquire. Mr. Kirschenbaum has retired from city service. And the City Council, in its appreciation for an outstanding job that you've done over the years, would like to present you with this citation. And it reads, "In recognition of his many years of commitment, dedication, and loyal service to the residents of Cranston and the City Council, we thank him for his sound judgment, legal opinions, and advice. Throughout his tenure as Assistant City Solicitor and Deputy City Solicitor, he has worked tirelessly on behalf of the City of Cranston. Attorney Kirschenbaum has served the City with honor, character, and integrity, and has always been fair and honest in his dealings with this City Council. The entire City Council extends its sincerest congratulations and its very best wishes on his retirement as Solicitor and express their hope for his continuing success, good health, and good fortune in all his future endeavors. As witness hereof, we set our hands and seal for this on the 23rd day of November 2015." Evan, congratulations, and we have a plaque for you. Council President, can I move for one last speech from Evan? Make a motion.
If I can go first, Evan. Can I go first?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak. And thank you to the Council for acknowledging Evan's service. Evan, I'll keep this short and sweet. On behalf of the Mayor and myself, we want to thank you for all of your service to the City, the Council, and all the related departments. I want to specifically thank you, Evan, for your intellect, your tutelage, your leadership, your wit, specifically your wit, your diligence, your integrity, your work ethic, your loyalty, your endurance, and again, your endurance, your friendship, your tenacity, your dignity, and all-important character. You grew up in this wonderful city. You chose to continue to live in it and raise your family, and you have now served it with love and honor for the past decade and a half. And I have no doubt you will always continue to do so in some capacity. Words cannot express how much you have meant to me personally and professionally, and all I can say is thank you.
I'd just like to make some brief comments if I could, Council President.
Please do.
And I don't intend to take up my full four minutes. I was prepared when I took this job that it would be challenging. I was prepared that it would be difficult. What I really wasn't prepared for is the dedication that each of you council members have shown to the job and the post that you were elected. It's truly a great testament to the City of Cranston, and really, each councilman here is grossly underappreciated for the job that they put in for the City at very low stipend that they get. Council President, you've done a great job of leading this Council. It's been a pleasure working with you my whole tenure here. I'll always enjoy our friendship. I would just like to say a quick word. My condolences go out to Pat Quinlan. Today, I got an email from the Clerk surrounding the loss of his son. He's become a true friend of mine, and I appreciated working with him throughout my tenure with the City. The City Council could not have obtained a better attorney to represent them than Patrick Quinlan. As Chris said, I was raised in the City. I was born in the City. It was a pleasure to work for the City and the City interests, and I'm proud of what I was able to do, in small part, in helping this Council achieve its goals and rendering advice to them. I thank you. This means a lot to me. This is an awesome award from people who I've worked closely with for a number of years. Thank you.
Mr. Kirschenbaum mentioned Pat Quinlan. If you don't mind, I'd like to have a moment of silence in memory of Pat Quinlan losing his son. Pat served this Council for many, many years with dedication, and my heart goes out to him and his family. I'm sure the rest of this Council feels exactly the same way. Thank you. Public hearings. Any member of the public would like to speak on any docketed item? We are limited. We are speaking to four minutes, and we have a sign-up list. And the first one is Suzanne Arena.
I have a copy of what I'm going to read. Can you hear me?
Is the mic on?
Yes.
Now it is.
I'm going to first make a statement by Albert Malikian, who is the founder of Regional Crime Watch for Cranston, which is formerly known as the Glen Hills Crime Watch. The Cranston Regional Crime Watch, which was formed by Albert Malikian Jr., includes the neighborhoods of Woodbridge, Dean Estates, Glenwood, and Garden Hills. The purpose of the Crime Watch is to address all safety and security issues having an impact on an area and resolving these issues with the Cranston Police Department and the related law enforcement agencies. Harrington Hall is of one such concern. Now I'm going to give you my statement. As a longtime advocate working on sex offender awareness and safety, I am here to support this Cranston resolution and agree with the Council to ask the General Assembly to limit the amount of sex offenders to be clustered in a specific area. There should not be limited to shelters, homes, and places that sex offenders are allowed to be housed should also be taken into consideration. In 2012, I organized a meeting with former Governor Shafie, Representative Mattiello, Mayor Fong, retired Colonel Colombo, Representative Bob Lancia, and Carolyn Maderas of the Alliance for Safe Communities, along with several other people. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the Harrington Hall sex offenders regarding programs, the addresses of sex offenders, the comprehensive plan for homeless, costs associated with that burden upon the Cranston taxpayers, and lastly, the relocation of sex offenders to an area like St. Elegius, the Boy Scout School, which is across from Crossroads, and the Lad School. Prior to the meeting, I specifically asked Representative Mattiello to have legislation passed that would cap the number to Harrington Hall at three to five. While Speaker Mattiello had been very diligent at the time surrounding the Harrington Hall issue, he has told me that I should settle with the gentleman's handshake, saying that this would be fine, which he did with the Governor. It was agreed upon by all that encompassing the programs for the homeless, they would include the sex offenders and make it fair, just, and equitable for all. We have had several Crime Watch meetings since then, and it continues to be an issue. At the last meeting, A.T. Walls, newest appointee, was asked about the programs, and he responded, "We're working on it." So they've been working on it since 2012 but haven't come up with anything. So we haven't put anything into place which would benefit them as well as us. It would keep them in programs, which is actually a lot less money than putting them back in prison if they're doing something wrong. Representative Mattiello has said that for the last three months, he is now working on this. Meanwhile, for years, we have been nagging about this and nothing gets done. Although I do want to recognize former Colonel Colombo, who took this very seriously and heard our concerns at the high number of sex offenders roaming around. I was specifically worried about sex offenders near our schools. I rallied the neighbors to get out one in our neighborhood, which is around the corner from our school. Senator Pam Gallo listened to me and put in legislation that I wanted for a 300-foot passage. It was actually 1,000 feet, but we watered it down, and we would have actually grandfathered in people that were already in place in a home. We would displace them. Anyhow, Colonel Colombo had put into Operation Vigilance, which is all the bus stops where children are. So pedophiles that lived in front of that bus stop could not look at them and bother them because there was an incident that had happened. So he put this in, brought me in, and I was very impressed. I have to say, I know that the Cranston Police have done their best, and they really have. They've put a lot of money, as taxpayers, I know we're putting into this. But I need to see that there's more. The welfare and safety of our community is taken seriously. From 2012 to now, we still haven't done anything. I am outraged. I think that's really just being asleep at the wheel. So from what I'm asking is to support this resolution. It's kind of a no-brainer to me. I will say that the flyers now do list specific addresses, which is a great thing. So the daycare centers know exactly where they are, which was an issue back then. So I really want the unmet promises to the people to be realized and materialized because the issues initially brought up in 2012 have never been resolved. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Albert Malikian. He's not here? Okay. Carolyn Maderas.
I present this to Councilwoman Vivekia and the entire Council. It's my gift to you. It's freedom of release information that I acquired for the whole Council. My name is Carolyn Maderas. I'm the Executive Director of the Alliance for Safe Communities. We're a 503 nonprofit. We work with Rhode Islanders to help them achieve the goal of living in safe communities, promised to them by government but not necessarily afforded. I work with local urban, suburban, and rural law enforcement, sex offender units, drug enforcement units, the state police, the Attorney General's Office, the Governor's Office, the Speaker's Office, senators and representatives, and at times, council members. Last year, we passed a child safe zone legislation keeping registered sex offenders from working in child facilities. This year, we recently passed the murder sentencing bill extending the time that a murder one, murder two would serve for the horrific crime of murder. This issue at Harrington Hall has been in front of me for three years, and the Crime Watch group has come to me repeatedly and asked for assistance. I have carefully watched the progress or lap up in that timeframe, and finally realizing that the numbers at Harrington Hall of Level Two, Level Three sex offenders were getting so great and should become of such concern that I proceeded with research, which is what I do as an executive lobbyist. The freedom of release information I give you, please note that in a six-month period, there were 155 rescue runs to Harrington Hall. A basic life support run runs from $1,200 to $1,400 per run. An advanced life support run runs from $1,800 to $2,000 per run. On an average, in six months, it cost the taxpayers of Cranston $200,000 for runs to Harrington Hall for cases such as overdosing, brawls, and fighting. When fire and rescue workers are reaching their destination to assist Harrington Hall residents, they're assaulted and beaten. This is a very common occurrence. It is very unacceptable. I am not including the peripheral runs where rescue has to go out on the bridges, or vacant buildings, or Garden City, or a library to intervene with one of the residents from Harrington Hall. I'm not including the billing per mile for these vehicles to get there, and I'm not including the fact that if a rescue vehicle from Garden City's fire department has to go to Harrington Hall for a resident there, and an elderly woman at Meschanic Vista is having a stroke, she'll have to wait for a rescue to come from Dyer Avenue. So resources are being directed and redirected at the cost of community safety. I find the programs at this facility questionable. Most recently, it's been brought to my attention that their drug rehab program was being directed, one of their programs was being directed by none other than my thrill killer, Alfred Brissette, that I had highlighted to the State of Rhode Island, who has only been released for about a year, who killed for the thrill of the kill. The Superior Court Judge stated so, and so did Alfred Brissette. Apparently, the only issue he had was substance abuse. So now he can counsel individuals on that issue, unsupervised, at Harrington Hall during the day, during one of the very few programs that they do offer. Because the policy at Harrington Hall is to shove the clients out the door at seven in the morning and allow them back in at five at night, which leaves them often to wander the community, with complaints coming from their panhandling on Sokanasa Crossroads, Pontiac Gav, and the exit ramps, Garden City as well. I hardly call this a structured program. Also, you'll find, besides the freedom of release information, millions of dollars have gone to House of Hope, the nonprofit that manages Harrington Hall. They work in conjunction with the Rhode Island Homeless Coalition. House of Hope's director is Gene Johnson. The homeless coalition would be Jim Reisak. Recently, Jim Reisak stated on Newsmakers with Tim White, and by the way, I work with all three news media stations, and talk radio, that they weren't sure what they were going to do with Harrington, but they were thinking of getting out of there. Well, if they were getting out of there, you'll notice in the packet that I gave you, they recently received "a blessing from God," quote-unquote, from Gene Johnson, with some million dollars to be distributed, which he intends to invest in Harrington Hall. I researched throughout the state. An issue in Harrington Hall is that you have about 25 Level Two, Level Three sex offenders in there, moderate to high-risk to reoffend. A couple of these guys raped women and children. Hot off the press, and on the top of that package, you'll see, before I left home, a recent arrival, Level Three sexually assaulted a five-year-old boy. 25 Level Twos and Threes. The sex offender unit told me there could be up to 15, 20 Level Ones. That would give you a total of maybe 40 sex offenders in that building. I have researched throughout the country. There is no such clustering in any facility that would have that many at-risk sex offenders together. You simply do not take the chance of clustering sex offenders and the consequences that come with that. But we are in Rhode Island. Monville, Connecticut, has a secure facility. If they leave the facility, they're arrested, fined, and incarcerated. It's part of their pre-release and post-release agreement. That's the only other facility I could find. Six states have legislation regarding capping the number of sex offenders that you would allow in a facility. Right now in Rhode Island, quite frankly, Councilwoman Vivekia, we could put a halfway house on your street and fill it with pedophiles. There's nothing you can do about it. There's simply no laws. Gene Johnson, the Director of House of Hope, is hiding behind the 1,000-foot residency law that was recently passed. She has stated, which is easy to catch her in lies, she often does, that her influx and increase in sex offender numbers came because of that law being passed. That law was passed, but it wasn't implemented until October. You will notice that I gave you a list of all the sex offenders dated all the way back to August. Those were not additions since that law had not been implemented yet. There are only five to six more additions since the law was implemented. So she cannot say that she has been overwhelmed with sex offenders because there's simply nowhere else for them to go. Also, I included freedom of release information. Gene Johnson owns up to 13, 14 properties in Warwick, predominantly, one in Providence, one in Pawtucket, and Harrington Hall, ranging in value from $33,000 to $300,000. I suggest that possibly we could divert some of these sex offenders into some of her other facilities. But I don't feel that three years into this, the money that we gave her was money well-spent. Not only are the Cranston taxpayers being raped of their hard-earned money, but their communities are being put at risk. I commend Councilwoman Vivekia for introducing this ordinance. I look forward to legislation being crafted. I've already met with the Speaker's Office, and I spoke in with Special Assistant to the Attorney General, Joey Lindbeck, that I crafted the child safe zone law with. Can we please get this ball rolling from here forward to get this done? Thank you so much for your time and your understanding. If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer anything. I'm sorry I dropped the box. It ripped.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public would like to speak on any docketed item? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, members of the Council. I am here to address the ordinance changes that are coming before you tonight. Luckily for you, I haven't been feeling very well, so my letter is short. I believe I sent it to all of you via email. In regard to the zoning ordinances on tonight's docket...
Before you can... Excuse me. Your name and address for the record?
Oh, Anne Marie Bruin, 126 Ocean Avenue, Cranston.
Thank you.
Sorry. I urge you to follow the recommendations of the Ordinance Committee and reject the proposed changes. While much of the debate about the allowed uses has been focused on large-scale solar generation, there are many other uses that have not been carefully examined, and there's no reason to hurry in order to put through major changes without accompanying standards for the new allowed uses. Had the public and the Council had as long to examine the proposed projects that will benefit from the ordinances, as long as the Planning Department and the administration have had, perhaps the conversation we are having tonight would be far different. How these issues are handled today will change the character of the City in the future, and disregard of the comprehensive plan is a poor indicator of the ability of this administration to do what is wise rather than what is politically expedient. Please put the brakes on the changes until a more reasoned and transparent process has been followed. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else from the public would like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record.
Just for the record, my name is Pete O'Polar. I'm the Director of Planning for the City. And I'm here tonight on the ordinances. I'm here to... We've met several times on the ordinances, rather than doing a presentation and going over what has been said over the last several meetings. If during your deliberations you have specific questions as to the ordinance or the implications of that ordinance, I'm here to answer them, and I would be glad to answer them. Thank you.
Douglas Door, 178 Lippett Avenue. Good evening. The question of secrecy surrounding the solar project should be of concern. Res Americas came to Cranston in secret, and they use the city planner's professional ethics to maintain that secrecy. Res Americas does not operate that way in Ontario. Ontario is accepting proposals to construct 140 megawatts of solar power. They expect the contracts to be awarded by December. Res Americas' Rest Canada branch estimated six proposals for 10-megawatt facilities. In each case, they have set up a website with all the pertinent documents. They have held public community meetings for each proposal, and have published a report for each meeting, but one. These proposals are nothing more than RFPs submitted to the Ontario Government. They have not gone before the regulatory bodies, unlike the Cranston proposal, which goes before the Planning Commission December 1st as a combined master preliminary plan hearing without a prior informational hearing. Clearly, Res Americas knows how to treat its neighbors with consideration, respect, openness, and transparency. If they came to Cranston in total secrecy, they would never be allowed to treat their Canadian neighbors in that manner. I ask the Council to suspend consideration of the solar ordinance until such time as our, yeah, Res Americas treats its potential Canadian Cranston neighbors with the same level of openness, respect, transparency, and consideration, no more, no less. Why should this Cranston City Council count as their neighbors being treated any differently? Suffering solar or alternative power generation from the ordinance were unable of following. One, this would allow the Council time to consider the other ordinance proposals separately and provide a larger space for discussion, since the solar would not dominate the process. The other parts of the ordinance are getting lost in the solar discussion. To a public community meeting, to provide the public an opportunity to learn about lower scale solar projects and discuss the project with the Res Americas representatives, as they do in Canada, in a setting that did not flow through either the Planning Commission or the Council, four minutes of the podium is not adequate. Res Americas has extensive experience with these public community meetings, as the report indicates. They conduct them as a routine matter of business. The planning department should welcome this type of community outreach. The fee is going to develop as public outreach prior to application is a precedent for this type of action. Director O'Polar asserted last week that he did not need a special ordinance to build Chapelview. However, he and the Planning Commission needed 14 months and 12 meetings to correct a parking islands violation. Parking islands? Chapelview's first lawyer was John Bolton, who argued that the commission had no authority to consider the issue. This does not inspire confidence in the planning's ability to ensure developer compliance without a specific ordinance. Regarding questions about the soil under the panels, I did locate a co-location of solar and agricultural study. There is a movement to design large-scale systems to allow farming to take place under and around the panels. It requires special layouts, et cetera, with the practices being studied has been implemented in the United States, Great Britain, and India. The co-location study states, quote, "Both research studies and commercial agricultural operations demonstrate that solar technologies can be compatible with harvestable crops. They modify panel height and spacing such that harvestable crops can thrive between them. Incorporating elevated solar installation technologies above existing agricultural production land would allow for the continuation of agricultural activities on parcels of land, particularly if the solar infrastructure is elevated enough that the amount of light reaches the crops without substantially reducing them. Such modifications might be an important consideration in areas that have a long history of agriculture, like Hope Road, and whether changes to land use practices may encounter social opposition." Extra time will allow planning and Council to revise the ordinance proposal and consult the Planning Commission. Does anyone want wood burning plants in residential zones? Does anyone want wood burning plants in residential zones even with a special use permit? If not, then wide open the door as the proposal does. Should wind turbine winds be commercial by special use permit or just as an accessory use? Should we do away with the AEG definition altogether and use separate definitions for wind turbines, solar panels, and large-scale solar facilities? So large-scale solar be by special use permit, as members of the Planning Commission have stated publicly? Do we need separate ordinances for solar and wind? Ontario's regulatory system handles the construction of shopping centers and skyscrapers, but they still require a separate detailed regulatory process for building renewable energy projects. And they have plenty of experience. As of today, they have constructed over 1,500 megawatts of solar power capacity, so they know what they're talking about and they know what they're doing. You're under no one's timetable. The projects being discussed now in Cranston and Ontario will not begin construction until early 2018 by Russ Canada's own timeline. That's two years from now. Actually, almost three years. On 2012, March 26th, the city council approved by unanimous vote, Resolution 2012-13, quote, "Supporting the creation and expansion of outdoor space, recreation, and city parks." By lines 83 through 82, we read, "Contact the Petromani family for possible acquisition of 60-acre Hope Farm, perhaps in conjunction with the federal government's National Resources Conservation Service." The council's support for acquiring farmland along Hope Road and the historic farm route was reaffirmed in the comprehensive plan. There is no reason for the council to rush through this complicated issue, and the council should not make the same mistakes that other communities have done before, as we discussed last week in Dartmouth, where they banned large-scale solar projects on residential land, and Egretown, where they have noise problems. Sever the alternative power sections and allow proper study, by all concern, to ensure that Cranston has an ordinance that meets the challenges of the new quickly developing technology. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak on any docketed item? Please come forward, give your name and address.
My name is Lawrence Weir. I live on 541 Hope Road. I really find it hard to believe that we're even having to discuss this solar plant. I've lived on Hope Road for 20 years, so this is probably a little more personal to me than some other folks here. But when I moved there 20 years ago, I recognized that I was living in an A80 zone that was residential and that there was land there that was also being farmed. So I never imagined that a commercial enterprise such as this would be proposed for that site. People buy their property, you know, with an understanding based on the city's master plan and the zoning as to what they can expect. So I think this is just something that doesn't belong there. I work in the energy business, so I'm not anti-solar. I probably have a little bias in favor of energy conservation because studies suggest that 30% to 50% of the energy used in this country could be generated by means of conservation. That doesn't mean there isn't a place for renewables, but this is... This may be the right project, that's not mine to decide, but it's in the wrong place. This is a historical area, as I had written in a letter to the Journal, and also, I'll just read that again, I had read this last time. Hope Road has been designated by the city council as part of the historic scenic farm in Western Cranston. According to the 1970 statewide historical preservation report, "The stretch of Hope Road laid out in 1767 to link the furnace in Hope, Situate, to the ore beds in Cranston, retains much of its 18th-century character, including its contour, narrow winding course, and dry-laid stone boundary walls." It is one of the best-preserved roads in Cranston. I think we need to look at how this project would affect the nature of our city, the nature of... Or the intent of the master plan and people's desire to live in the city of Cranston. Solar plants are certainly something that's coming. They just need to be in the appropriate location. I read an article, I was just looking at something in Wikipedia, and it said the best location for solar parks in terms of land use are held to be brownfield sites or where there are no other valuable land uses. I think this land has many valuable uses, and a solar farm is not the highest and best use of this property.
Is there anybody else from the public to speak on any docketed item?
Hi, I'm Lynn Harrington, President of the West Bay Land Trust. I live on Taff Street in Cranston, and I appear to speak against the two proposed ordinances, specifically the solar ordinance. Over the past probably six weeks or so, we've given various arguments why we should not allow the solar farm on agricultural lands in Western Cranston. We've talked about the historic nature of the farm. We've talked about the value of the quality of life out on Hope Road, and we seem to have danced around the financial implications of this. Now, I realize it's very risky to put some numbers out there, but I feel we'd be irresponsible if we didn't at least address this. I'd like to break it down into three possibilities. The first being the 30 houses that we talk about all the time that would go there if the solar array didn't occupy that site. The second being the actual solar facility. And the third being the value of the current farmland and output that it now produces. The first possibility that keeps getting votes is these 30 houses because they have an approved plan. And when we talk about the 30 houses, we seem to get down to what it costs the city. The numbers that are thrown about are it costs $26,000 to educate a student, netting out, say, $10,000 for home taxes. We have a net loss of $16,000 per student to the city. If you base that on one child per house, you've got almost a half a million dollar deficit. But even this is a bit disingenuous. What those houses also bring is a substantial income to the city in purchasing power, and of course, the values of the home that are there. I'm not saying by any chance that this would be a preferred alternative, but it's disingenuous to not think of all the angles of that property and the possible uses. The second would be the solar facility, as has been discussed. A number that was bandied about last meeting was that property taxes would be in the neighborhood of $50,000 a year now instead of the $10,000 a year that is currently being charged for the farmland. So we'd have perhaps a net increase to the city of about $40,000. If we looked at the current value of the farmland, and this would also serve if the farmers conserve this wealth, and this also can go for any agricultural property, I don't mean to pick on Hope Farm. If you count the value of the rent that one of our local farmers pays to grow corn here, the retail value of the corn, the property taxes that are paid on that farmland, and the fuel and equipment costs that go into keeping that business going, you have an initial investment of about $40,000 a year, remarkably similar to the solar array. But what this number does not take into account is the multiplier of all these other values that come on top of just having the corn produced. And what I mean is, if this works out to about, say, 10 cents an ear of corn, you know, this basic value to get out the door, to get into the truck, when this corn is then sold at a farm stand throughout the city, you have a magnitude of increase of four or five times per cost, which means that you are supporting, you know, hundreds of part-time and full-time employees during the summer, spring, and fall months, which would not happen if we had just the regular static already here. The value of this quality of life in Western Cranston is immeasurable, so I won't even get into that number. But I need to impress upon everyone that it's... The value of the agricultural community in Cranston is just can't be understated, and I hope that we consider a better siting policy for the solar facilities that are top prime agricultural land. There are other areas in the city that are, you know, either in disuse or in less abuse than these areas, so I urge you not to approve either ordinance as they stand, but send them back for review and discussion. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Mike Sepey, 95 Massachusetts Street, and I'm the Democratic City Chair for my title, Councilman Botts. First of all, I'd like to commend Suzanne Arena and Carolyn Maderis and Councilman Vivekio for introducing that resolution this evening. I think they did an outstanding job, and there's not much more I can say on it, except, you know, she said there was 155 runs. When I talked to a few people, those runs, a lot of those people wanted to get to downtown Provinence, so they called the rescue squad to take them down. Now, the Cranston Fire Department wised up, and they said, "We're going to take you to Kent County." A lot of them don't want to go, and that's the reason they were getting a free ride to downtown Provinence. You know, with the... The way the bus, Ripter's going right now, they're going to be cut about $9 million. That means there won't be as many free rides, and a lot of these people are going to be hanging around Garden City, Chapelview, and don't forget, we have two schools in that area. So I just want to commend you for introducing that resolution, and I hope something happens with the General Assembly. Now, on the other... On the ordinances, I think I spoke in front of the Ordinance Committee about two weeks ago. These are not good ordinances for the simple fact they're not letting the people come to speak on any changes. It seems like these two ordinances were put in specifically for the solar farm and for the plating company. It seems like they were done for no other reason at all. Let the people vet how they feel. I'm not in favor or against either one of them, but I think the people have a right to come and speak how they feel, if they're in favor of it or if they're against it. You know, they call it spot zoning. I think this is spot zoning, to be quite honest with you, because if somebody is going to be coming in front of the Ordinance Committee or the zoning board, and they don't agree, they're going to run and have the zoning changed. Well, that's not good. That's not good at all, because we're ruining the whole thing of what the Ordinance Committee is all about, when you want to change the zone, or when you have a zoning board. What good is the zoning board if they're not going to go for their variants? You know, it just seems so strange that the zoning board shot down the plating company. But the plating company never appealed it within the 20 days to Superior Court. What did they do? They had Mr. Lapola change the zone on it. You know, it's so strange. They got shot down, but they also bought the property for $1.4 million. Members of this city council, we made many changes up in Western Cranston the 10 years that I served on the city council. And I'll tell you, some of them were good changes, some of them were not so good, but we took each one individually. And I think that's how this city council should act on these two ordinances. Thank you, and I think they should be denied. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public like to speak on any docketed item? Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Council President, members of the council. My name is Steve Carrarum, speaking. As a member of the zoning vote of review, as I picked before you last week in the Ordinance Committee, I was opposed to the ordinance amendments for several reasons. First, I don't think that the comprehensive plan, after all the work that you... That each and every one of you did, that the planning department did, should be tainted with constantly. It's consistent with the city chart. We need time for it to work. I think that that time has yet to pass. And besides, if anyone has any redress that needs to be done, it could be done in front of the zoning board. All right? That's why that body exists, a volunteer force to address the neighborhood issues. This goes around that. So if you amend the ordinances with respect to the comprehensive plan, you're taking a very important citizen component out of the process. I rise this evening to most seriously oppose those amendments. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public like to speak on any docketed items? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Matt Chandran, 139 Smith. So there's a few... As I read it, three ordinance proposals that are being streamlined. They're moving from special use permits to permissive usage or from restricted to special use. As far as solar goes, I think it makes a lot of sense to be reviewing those with people who live near them, and that's what the zoning ordinance... And that's what zoning does for us. As far as the metal plating goes, just a few months ago, there were a whole lot of people in this room a couple of times in one month to talk about the metal plating at the Cranston Print Works. And, I mean, I think the council is, you know, recalls what was set just a few months ago on that topic. But they wouldn't have had a chance to talk if we had made it permissive zoning in, what is it, an M5 or whatever that zone is. And then there's a third. There's actually... There's a motor vehicle as well, and that's moving a C4 from special use permit to a permissive. And, you know, C4 is starting to get more towards highway commercial, and it's, you know, maybe that's okay, but, I mean, if you happen to live around the corner from that, maybe you'd want to have input on that. Those are my thoughts. As far as solar, you know, solar, great, way to go, but this project, I think the neighbor should have a chance to vet it, and it should be up and down in its particular merits. Also, there's going to be some restrictions on what... At some point soon, there's going to be a proposal before you about what... How to pay for removal of solar panels, and I think that's probably a great way to handle it and deal with that first, and then deal with zoning solar. Thank you.
My name is John Olsher. My wife Joyce and I own the Good Earth Organic Garden Center, which is on... At 1800 Situate Avenue. As a farmer, I hate to see a project like this even considered, because here in Rhode Island, agriculture is one of the up-and-coming business categories. There's a lot of people, young people, getting into farming, and it's hard for them to find land to do the farming. So to take this property and turn it into what is essentially an industrial zone just doesn't make sense, as one of the other speakers tonight said. It's a good project, but in the wrong place. I think solar... I'm actually very excited to hear that the council is considering the benefits of solar and trying to get that worked into the city of Cranston. I think that's great. This is not a place for that kind of a project, though, for many, many reasons, which have been illustrated by a number of the other people that spoke tonight. The other thing that troubles me about these ordinances is regarding the metal plating. I know if... To think that somebody would be moving a business like that into a residential neighborhood just doesn't make any sense. There's a lot of hazardous chemicals and whatnot that are involved in that process, and I don't think a residential neighborhood is at all the appropriate place to have such a business. So I would urge you to vote against those ordinances. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the public like to speak on any docketed item?
Is a docketed item on the Syrian refugee?
That's a docketed item, yes.
May I, please? The Alliance for Safe Communities wanted to thank the introduction of the docket item regarding the Syrian refugees and the actions that the Councilman Vivekio outlines here. I'm not an expert on terrorism. It's an opinion. I speak for the members of the Alliance for Safe Communities, and I consulted also with the Executive Director of Ryle, Rhode Island's for Enforcement of Illegal Immigration. Before I came this evening, he wasn't able to attend. They have some 400-some members, both well-known organizations. I think we're in different times. We're on a different playing field. I think the last time we saw best practices utilized with taking refugees in was during President Carter's era, where Fidel Castro was releasing criminals from the prisons and mentally ill from the insane asylums to come here as refugees. The United States intervened under Carter's administration, and an Air Force base was set up in Florida and prepared for their arrival. That was over 100,000 refugees, something like 186,000. They were vetted over a two-month period. Some were sent back, and some were kept. They were vetted over a two-month period, some were sent back and some were kept. However, we're dealing with apples and oranges, because although there might have been some criminals or mentally ill, there were none within those numbers whose sole mission was the annihilation and destruction of citizens in this country. And we're taking great risks. If you have 99 of these refugees and one is a bomber, a, a bomber with a vest, you put them in a room like this and they'll take out the whole city hall. I think we need to take those considerations into mind when we're moving forward with this. Um, we need to take into consideration, we're taking them in on welfare dollars. When they did this in Florida, all the financing was established for those refugees when they arrived on that island. It was allocated and afforded to them within that two-month period. What we're doing now is taking them on the welfare rolls and the numbers are astronomical. It could possibly just decimate our economy. Although I have a great deal of compassion for these people who are fleeing their situation, I have deeper concerns for the citizens in our country, the people of this state, and the people of the city of Cranston. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody else like to speak on any docketed item?
Council President Lanny, members of the council, my name is John Bolton, address 22 McIntosh Drive, Cranston. I'm an attorney here on behalf of ResAmerica, who is, uh, looking to invest in the city of Cranston with a, uh, solar panel facility. Um, a couple of, uh, just responding to a couple of remarks made earlier this evening, we're not seeking an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Contrary to that, your planner has, um, determined, as is his role, that these proposed ordinances are indeed consistent with the comprehensive plan as it exists today. Uh, with respect to the opportunity for the public to participate, uh, there has been an ordinance committee meeting and above and beyond that, to this council's credit, they scheduled a working session last week where several of us, including members of the council who aren't even members of the ordinance committee, participated in an open forum to discuss this important topic. So I think any suggestion that the public hasn't been invited to participate in this process, uh, isn't quite accurate. Uh, with respect to the proposed ordinance, uh, affecting the, uh, use of solar facilities, I, I want to first acknowledge that it's my understanding and based on the agenda that Councilman Stykos has introduced a new ordinance which would, um, impose performance standards on this particular use. Uh, I'm here to state for the record that, uh, my client stands ready, willing, and able to comply with each and every one of those performance standards proposed by Councilman Stykos. I will note that within those performance standards is a noise restriction of 40 decibels. That is significantly less than your existing residential, uh, noise limit of 50 to 55 decibels. That being said, again, my client stands ready, willing, and able to comply with those performance standards. And if due to procedural requirements, you're not able to, to move on that new ordinance with respect to the performance standards, I will state for the record and on behalf of my client, to bind my client, that they will be bound with those, by those performance standards, whether they pass tonight or at some other time in the future. Uh, with respect to the substance of what we're talking about here, looking to place this facility in an A80 zone is indeed a form of conservation. This, the installation of these panels for a period of time, which is estimated to be about 20 years, actually allows the soil to heal from the previous farming activities that has occurred on that soil. As is, was, uh, demonstrated at your working session last week, with materials provided by sources such as the Audubon Society, such as the Sierra Club, there is no adverse impact on the land by placing these panels there. Again, to the contrary, it preserves the land. It also creates no new impervious or paving structures, which allows for the, the rainwater to go into the land as it does today. And given the problems of flooding that we are all aware of as residents of the city of Cranston, this is a major plus to not pave at all. When you, as, as opposed to putting in 30, uh, lots with driveways and roads, et cetera, which would increase the impervious. The state of Rhode Island has, as an initiative, the advancement of renewable energy sources. And in the Rhode Island Energy Plan published just last month, it quotes, "Supporting the growth of in-state renewable energy generation will bring economic development, system reliability, and job creation benefits to the state." With respect to the economics, uh, the particular piece of land that my client is looking to develop in, notwithstanding what may have been said earlier, they're looking to begin construction within six months, not in 2018. And they need to do that in order to take advantage of investment tax credit under the federal law, which is due to expire, uh, in the near future. Putting, uh, a 30-lot subdivision, which that land is approved for today, would cost $450,000 to the city. And that's based on 30 lots times $15,000 per lot. That $15,000 number is not a number that we made up, this is a number that the city, uh, planner has come up with, looking at the expenses versus the services. This proposal creates no demand on city services. There's no police demand, there's no fire demand, there's no water, there's no sewer. It's just tax money, as, as estimated, based on the, the, um, proposal, to be about $50,000. So you have a choice of a loss of $450,000 or a gain of $50,000. On top of that, we're not putting any new children in the schools in Weston Cranston by putting this facility. A 30-lot subdivision will. And my children went to those schools, and as we're all aware of, because those schools are some of the best in the state, there's a great demand for those schools. And they were already overcrowded. And we don't need to put another 30-lot subdivision to further overcrowd those schools. We, as a country and as a state and as a city, often talk about green energy, conservation, reducing our reliance on foreign, uh, oil sources and fossil fuels and the inherent pollution. The question becomes, what do we do when we're faced with an opportunity to do something about it? And I want to quote Mr. Charles Gavlin, who's the Executive Director of the Audubon Society of Maine. Under his leadership in Maine, they placed solar panels on a 65-acre farm on land owned by the Audubon Society, a farm. And he was asked, "Why did you do that?" And he said, and this is a quote, "It's time to begin to walk the walk instead of just talking the talk." We all talk about green energy, we all talk about renewables, it's now time to do something about it. Here's an opportunity for the city to conserve this land and generate tax revenue at the same time. Thank you. And representatives from ResAmerica are here if you have any questions, welcome. Thank you again.
Is there anybody else in the public who'd like to speak? Please come forward, give your name and address to the record.
Hi, my name is Heather Thibodeau. I live at 137 Blackmore Ave. And, um, I'm just a regular person that lives in Cranston. And, um, I'm just concerned because, uh, I know there was a working meeting on Wednesday, it was at 9:00 or 9:30. I work, a lot of us work. Um, wasn't it 9:30 on Wednesday? Was it night?
6:30.
6:30, okay. Well, I missed it. Sorry that I missed it. But my point is that I looked at the Hope Farm proposal and, um, it's pretty good and slick, but there's a lot of empty pages in it. And if I was a teacher, I probably would have given it a D, because there was so much missing. And, um, I think that we deserve an A as citizens of Cranston, and I would give a D so far for citizen involvement in talking about this ordinance and this proposal. And I think you're all capable of A work, because I'm watching how hard you work every time you come in here. And I'm just asking you to be, to be, to use your A-ness and to help, uh, include citizens in this incredibly, uh, weighty decision that we're making about our land and our community. So, thank you for your time.
Uh, please step forward, give your name and address to the record.
My name's Frank Defurcio. I'm the President of Defurcia Industries, the, um, proposed metal plating company. I just want to clarify a couple of facts. Um, one is, we are now current owner of a portion of what was the Cranston Print Works, which is the remote back, um, western side of the Pecasset River, uh, which is not noticeable from Dire Avol Cranston Street, per se. Um, the overwhelming majority of the finishing technologies that we provide, are used by right under M1. Uh, metal plating is roughly 10% of our business and that's why we came to the, to the, to the council for the special use permit. We plan on going forward with what we can do there until it's reconsidered or we reappeal in two years after we move the Star Street operation into, um, Cranston Street. So I just want to clarify that. Uh, and as respect to jobs, um, we've got 50 employees that'll, um, be over by early 2016 and we propose, well, we plan to create an additional 50 jobs, so there'll be 100 jobs that we're bringing to Cranston. That's about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public who'd like to speak on any docketed item?
Suzanne Arena, 88 Lake Land Drive. I wasn't planning to speak, but listening to the folks talk about the, um, zoning, um, a couple of thoughts came to mind. I'm a former member of the Cranston Citizens for Responsible Zoning and Development. We, um, pushed to have a concrete plant taken out, you will recall back on the Laffey, um, administration, taken out over, um, by CLCF. And there was a permit given at the time for an inappropriate type of industry that went into that area. And when that went in, it created a community uprising and we were outraged. Um, it was a little different than hearing solar panels going in. I would be interested to learn a little bit more, it was a very compelling, um, statement made, that there's really no impact on the land. I will say, one of the things we looked at when we looked at the open space, and we did work with the, the West Bay Land Trust to ensure that there was open space in Cranston and there was a $6 million bond written, and we were very careful about looking at the comprehensive plan. We did a lot of work on that a couple of years ago. It does sound to me, though, I, I haven't looked at it, I, I'm gonna be interested now in looking into it more, but putting solar panels is eliminating a footprint in my community that we're putting a lot of, um, you know, from ga, different gases and there's no metal going into the land, there's no resources that are being taken off the land. So I'd be interested in maybe hearing more from both sides, maybe sitting down and, and talking more about the impacts on their businesses. But my big thing is, when you change the permitting, that, that was a big problem way back then. So what if the solar panel company goes away in another year and just folds, and now they're just free to put in anyone else because you've already given them a permit? That's what I have a problem with. So I just want to make sure that whatever permitting you give or, it should be really vetted out before. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public who'd like to speak on any docketed item? Please, name and address to the record, please.
Hi, Lynn Harrington, Taff Street in Cranston. I just wanted to, um, register my vehement opposition to the, um, bill that has been proposed to prohibit Syrian refugees, uh, I guess either in the city of Cranston or to suggest that the governor not allow them to the state. Uh, we have a long and rich history of being in, um, being in a, in asylum, I guess, for folks needing a place to live. We had, um, the big Indo-Chinese refugee influx in the early 80s, and I think there has been almost nothing but success with these folks that have come here. Um, the original asylum seeker to Rhode Island, Roger Williams, I think would be abhorred with this policy. This is not to say that I don't believe that there will be terrorists that try to hit us, that's true, but to say, you know, 100%, we don't want any Syrian refugees in our community, I, I think is just abominable. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak on any docketed item? Hearing none, I close this portion of the public hearing. Uh, moving on to resolution.
Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Sito.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, move the first resolution to the January 4th Public Works Meeting, so it be heard and then sent to the full council. The resolution on the abandonment of an unnamed right-of-way between 2398, 2406 Cranston Street.
Is that in the form of motion?
Yes.
Is there a motion that made and second any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, resolution in support of the General Assembly request to deny ISIS Syrian refugees in Rhode Island, sponsored by Councilman Vivekio. Councilman, would you like to comment on this?
Yes, thank you, Council President.
Or should I approve?
I'll second for the, for discussion purposes. Okay, thank you, Council President. I think, just to point out clarification, the lady that got up and spoke, uh, most recently on this, it, what it does say is to temporarily deny Syrian refugee resettlement. And if you read the last paragraph, you'll also see that it says that until such time that all issues as to security and financial impact are resolved. So to, to clarify, the, the, the issue, as I see it, is that we put the cart before the horse. Yeah, we're basically, the administration in Washington is suggesting that their, their policies on the Syrian civil war have failed, so there's no way to bring, to put these people back in their homeland, um, which I, I think is, you know, putting the cart before the horse. Um, I think that we have, this is a different time, as one of the speakers said, uh, these people, uh, the ISIS terrorists, uh, are willing to take women and children and use them as weapons. It's not that we, um, obviously are not compassionate about, uh, orphans and, and women and other refugees who have been displaced by civil war, uh, but there's a way to do it. Um, and in listening to all of the leaders around the country, all of the Homeland Security congressmen, and even our own Congressman Landevan, um, went against the White House on this issue. The, the, the issue is, is serious. These people have no qualms about using women as suicide bombers, uh, and we have no policy, we really, really have no plan. Um, if you listen to what even, uh, Secretary of State Kerry said yesterday, he said, "We're creating a strategy as we speak." Well, we should have had a strategy years ago and now the problem is great. There, the, uh, Exodus has taken place over two and a half years. So the problem is, and it bubbled over into the, the Paris Incident, which we were totally unaware of and unprepared for. Uh, we've got terrorists that have been, uh, found in Warwick, uh, we had the, Mrs. Sennayev lived, came from North Kingston, Rhode Island. Um, so it, it does touch us, we had the, the Marathon bombing, which, uh, affected a lot of people, even in Rhode Island. Bottom line is, I think we, we certainly would look at bringing these people in, but I think before we jump the gun, I think we need to know what the plan is for security first and also the financial impact, as, um, Carolyn mentioned, concerning the rescue runs. You don't know what the, the potential financial impact of this could be. Uh, these people will need tremendous amount of resources, uh, and I don't think that Rhode Island is ready for it and Cranston, uh, certainly doesn't need any more expenses. So, um, it's just a, it's obviously a symbolic message and I would just, uh, urge my colleagues to, to approve it.
Uh, Councilman Sito.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just for the Boy Scouts who are here, in front of the Statue of Liberty, it says, "Give me your tired..." me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses, yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send yeas, the homeless, tempests tossed, to me. I lift up my lamp, I lift up my lamp beside the Goatman Door." That's what it says at the Statue of Liberty coming into Ellis Island. I'm a little bit emotional on this, because I'm an immigrant. I was important in this country. What's next after this resolution? Well, I'm prepared, because I was a Boy Scout for two years. I have my citizen paper, I have my passport, I have my DD 213, which means I served in the armed forces for six years. Congress has already made a ruling on this. They're not doing anything. They started a moratorium. As far as the other aspects of this resolution, what's emergency management doing? They're practicing for these things all the time. I have at least 50 relatives who are either uncles, first cousins, who have immigrated to this country. Granted, there was a process, and they followed it. I have immigrants' uncles who were here during World War II, who were put in camps at Quonset until they figured out what side they were going to fight for. I think everything in this ordinance is already being done. I also think that this ordinance should not be in front of us. It's not the right place. We're not the makers of immigration and naturalization policy, and for that reason, I will be abstaining and not voting on this order.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I thought about my grandfather, he moved from Italy when you were giving that speech, and how he went by the Statue of Liberty. My problem with this ordinance is, I don't like the way it's written. Not that I'm an English major by any stretch of the imagination, but line 27 says, "Be it resolved, the Cranston City Council calls on the Rhode Island General Assembly to cease and desist accepting placements." I think if I called every member of the General Assembly right now, I don't think that's part of their job description. They're not responsible to accept placements for Syrian refugees. That's a whole separate department. This is an incorrect statement that I'm going to be voting on. So I'm not voting on it unless it's changed, which means I probably recommit it or have it rewritten. But it's, the General Assembly does not, we're asking to cease and desist on something they don't even do. So until such time as that's fixed, I'm not going for this resolution, purely for the written form.
Councilman Jerry Nocito.
Kato, sorry.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I have a few issues with this resolution also. It's a request to temporarily deny Syrian refugees resettlement, and from my understanding as a history professor, I know there's numerous Christian Syrians. So are we going to deny a Christian Syrian resettlement when I don't think he has any intention of being a terrorist? So I just feel that this is way too, way too broad, and I think it should be resubmitted to a committee to be discussed. I will not be supporting this resolution.
Councilman Stykos.
Yes. I think, I'm opposed to this resolution. I think that it's part of a hysteria that some political parties are encouraging. And I'd like to read what it takes for a Syrian refugee to get in the United States. Number one, they have to register with the UN. Then they get, number two, they get interviewed by the UN. Then number three, that's when the UN decides whether they're given refugee status. And they're then, number four, they're referred for resettlement in the United States. This comes from the New York Times yesterday. Number five, they get interviewed by the State Department, by contractors for the State Department. Number six, they go through a first background check. Number seven, they go through a high-level background check for some of them. Number eight, they go through another background check. Number nine, they're fingerprinted, and their photo is taken, and their fingerprint is screened. Number 10, their fingerprint is screened for a second time. Number 11, their fingerprints are screened for a third time with the FBI and Homeland Number 12, their case is reviewed by US Immigration at the headquarters. Number 13, some of the cases are referred for additional review. And Syrians have to undergo these two additional steps, by the mere fact that they're from Syria. Number 14, there's an extensive in-person interview with the Homeland Security officer. Number 15, they're screened for contagious diseases. Number 16, they're given a cultural orientation class. Number 17, they're matched with an American resettlement agency. Number 18, there is a multi-agency security check before leaving for the United States. And number 19, they're given a security check at an American airport. So this is not just opening up the, to settle a measly 10,000 refugees in the United States, considering what is going on in Europe, is, frankly, it's pathetic, 10,000. But they have to go to, this process takes, on average, two years for them to get in the country. So it's not, anybody can come in and they might wear a suicide vest on the plane. Let's talk about reality. That's the first thing. And then, on a more personal level, I buy my gas from a Syrian. I go to a convenience store that's closest to my house that's with a Syrian. I go to a Syrian grocery store on Rolfe Street. Just because of where you're born doesn't mean that you're more prone to terrorism. I think you probably recall the Red Brigades. They were Italian. They were blowing people up. They assassinated the Prime Minister of Italy, Aldo Moro. Did people come forward and say, "Oh, we've got to keep all the Italians out of Rhode Island?" No, they didn't. My grandfather, like Mario, my grandfather came to this country as an immigrant, as a teenager, and he came through Ellis Island, and I'm very glad he did. Thank God he did, because he came from Turkey. He was a Greek living in Turkey. And at my house, I have a Muslim prayer rug on the wall. And it's on the wall, not because he was a Muslim, but because in Turkey, you had, as a Greek Orthodox, you would have a Muslim prayer rug, because if a Muslim came to visit you, and they needed to pray, you brought out the prayer rug. And that's the only thing that survives from his home in Turkey, where he grew up, is that Muslim prayer rug. And he gave it to me. So I think we're a country that was built by immigrants, the Italians, the Greeks, the Mexicans, the Chinese, and we're a great country because of it. And to have a resolution like this, which is just a figment or a symptom of fear, is disgraceful. And I'm not going to vote for it to refer it back to committee, because I want to kill it right now. Thank you.
Councilman Botts.
Thank you, Chairman. Just to address a couple of things. Councilman Stykos mentioned how the process that these immigrants have to go through to get into the country. Well, if anyone watched 60 Minutes a couple weeks ago, the government came to vet their own employees for security clearance. And we want to trust the government to vet immigrants coming over, and we don't have any idea who these people are, and we had a notion of what these people are, whether it was Edward Snowden, Chelsea Manning, whatever his name was before he decided to switch sides. But the thing is, is that you read an article in The Atlantic, not a conservative magazine by any means, and I'll read a short passage from this. "Immigrants in Europe who include their ranks a growing number of Muslims are often more likely to be idle than the native population. Swedish immigrants who aren't employed at a rate double the national average. The same is true in Germany, with the highest unemployment rates observed among immigrants from the Middle East. The unemployment rate for immigrants to France stands at over 17%, nearly double the rate for non-immigrants. While there is some evidence of anti-immigrant discrimination in the workforce, the most important culprit behind these statistics is the mismatch between requirements of the European job market, and the skills that migrants bring with them, and their children are able to acquire in the first generation of resettlement. This mismatch is accentuated by European labor rules that impose heavy costs on employers beyond the wages they pay. Those costs discourage the hiring of new arrivals, whose skills typically lag behind those of the native-born. General social welfare systems include the pressure on immigrants to accept low-wage employment. And all of this occurs in the context of the severe economic austerity policies required to preserve the euro currency. Well, if this does describe Rhode Island as well, I don't know what does. We have a high unemployment rate. Everything I read says our workforce here now doesn't have the skills for the new economic environment that is required. And so now, what we're doing is, we're inviting Syrian immigrants into the state. And I think it'll exacerbate the problem. Now, it doesn't matter if it's Syrians or whatever, I, you know, what the problem is, is that they're going to come into this country, and the skill gap exists, and everything else. To me, I just have a problem with a lot of the things, whether it's being able to vet them coming into the country. And the difference is, between yesterday, when your relatives came over through Ellis Island, and today, is that there wasn't a movement behind the scenes to try and subvert the process by putting people in there that can come to the country and kill a lot of people. I mean, God forbid, if those people with the vests near the Stade de France got into that stadium. And you know what? We have numerous stadiums throughout this country, and the mass casualties would be enormous. And to me, we don't need to invite further dangers to this country. 9/11 happened, it's a reality. The reality is, the people that committed 9/11 came from the Middle East, it wasn't Syria, but it was the Middle East. Whether it's Al Qaeda, Daesh, ISIL, ISIS, whatever they want to call themselves, they want to kill Americans. And to me, I think we need to go slow in terms of having the immigrants come into this country, and I support Councilman Favecchio's resolution, and I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor to it. Thank you.
Councilman Patlakos.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I think we have an obligation to work for the safety of our citizens here in Cranston and here in Rhode Island. That being said, this is near and dear to my heart. My wife wasn't a refugee, but she did immigrate to this country, and if she didn't, we wouldn't have the wonderful family that we have now. In fact, she made her sedition ship last year, which is one of the proudest days of her life, and I was happy to share that with her. As far as Councilman Santa Maria's issue with line 28 and 29, I wrote up an amendment, and I'm happy to introduce it if the sponsors would like to hear it. Okay. So my amendment would be to this, and it's open for discussion, obviously, is strike line 28 and 29, and I'd like to replace it with, "Work with members of Homeland Security to ensure that a plan is in place to ensure the safety of the citizens of Rhode Island." That's it. Thank you.
Is that in the form of motion?
Yes.
Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on this motion? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilwoman Stykos?
Yes.
Councilwoman Carrick?
Yes.
Councilwoman Seale?
No.
Councilwoman Ross?
Yes.
Councilwoman Favecchio?
Yes.
Councilwoman O'Grady?
No.
No. Motion's defeated. All right. Anybody else want to speak on this? I guess it's my turn. We are facing the biggest refugee problem since World War II. There's 2 to 4 million refugees looking for a place to live, because they're forced out of their homeland. Many are in Turkey, many are in Europe, very, very few are in the United States. The United States, this country, is a country of immigrants and refugees. We're all descendants of immigrants and refugees, every one of us here, unless you're Native The Irish came here for what reason? Economic and political oppression. And because there was religious persecution by the English in Ireland. The Italians came here for basically the same reason, economic oppression. The Jews came to Rhode Island because of political oppression and religious persecution prior to World War II, and during World War II, and after World War II. The Syrians are the latest. The Armenians came here because of genocide, the Turks wanted to kill every one of them. The Armenians came here for the same reason as the Syrians had come here. They had no choice, either leave or die. Our own mayor's parents came here, they're Chinese, from a communist country. We didn't stop them and say, "They're communists, they shouldn't be here." We allowed them to come here, after they went through the vetting process. And that's all these people want to do. Two years to take, become, to come into this country, two years in a vetting process. If you can't separate the good from the bad in two years, this country really has a problem. And you know, if you're a terrorist and you wanted to come to this country, you wouldn't come as a refugee and wait two years. You'd get a visa and fly here, and be a student, and fly here from another country, and say, "I'm going to go to university." That's the easy way. We're worried about refugees when we should be worrying about people getting passports. And I'm disappointed in this resolution, because I, it seems like, and I hate to put politics in this, but this is almost a Republican Party line you hear on TV every night, from Donald Trump on down. And it's not the way I think, and I don't think it's the way most people in this state Let's give this a chance. Let's work together, and let's see what the vetting process actually is. 10,000 refugees, are they all going to come to Rhode Island? You know something, if they all went to New York, they could move to Rhode Island. So you're not going to stop people from going state to state. Let's give this an opportunity to work. Let's work together. Just think of your own parents and grandparents, what they went through, and let's give these people the same opportunity our ancestors had. Thank you. Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Just to clarify a couple of things that you said, and also Councilman Stykos. My, all of my grandparents immigrated here from Italy, so I come from a family of immigrants. They worked really hard. And I'm not necessarily signaling out those people, but the plant, the people that they could try to plant inside of these groups of people. It has nothing to do with whether they're Syrian. I actually buy gas from a Syrian gas station owner myself. I have no problem with that. I think what Councilman Botts mentioned was that, you know, there are so many holes in our vetting process. I mean, I know you said there's a 20-step process. The problem is, they have no database of records. So I don't care how much of an investigation you do, you're not going to find out anything about anyone that comes in that way. And, Council President, you're right. The bigger problem may be, this may be a moot issue, because the visa issue and the ability to come in through Mexico and as a student, probably makes it very easy to get into this country, and they're already, we've already seen that they've been here. So, you know, and the other thing is, I think, as the Councilman Nocito, they mentioned that the Congress already passed a moratorium on this. So technically, the issue is moot as of today, but Congress agreed- So technically, the issue is moot as of today, but Congress agreed with what I've proposed. So whether or not you vote for it, I guess it doesn't matter since Congress already weighed in on this and actually voted in favor of such a moratorium.
Okay, Councilman Santa Maria.
I agree with Councilman Favecchio in that we're one of 39 city councils in this small state of Rhode Island. This is something that has to be done on the federal and the state level. This should be introduced by a General Assembly member. I know one of the senators said she was going to introduce something, but us passing a resolution would absolutely have no bearing on any decisions that are made on a federal level or a state level. I think that if the governor, I think it's the governor's call and the, you know, the state representatives and the state senators' call, I don't think it's anything that, I don't know. I mean, it is a moot point because the, I believe it was the Senate, or was it the, it was the General Assembly of the United States. Matter of fact, one of our representatives voted with the Republicans. So that's something that they have to fight over. We depend on them to protect us on a federal level. This is a federal, this is a federal issue. None of us works for the immigration, none of us works for any Homeland Security. I appreciate Councilman Paplos' amendment because the way it was written now was just horrible. But the intent of this resolution, I think, doesn't even carry the value of the paper it's written on. That's my point of view.
Councilman Aket.
Thank you, Council President. As I said, I think I can't support this resolution. It's very broad. It seems like it's a knee-jerk reaction to what's going on in Syria. However, I do have respect and understand my colleague because, as one of the speakers says, these are dangerous times. These are times to try men's souls. There's a lot of danger and terrorist activity out there. So I can understand the concept for this, but I just can't support this because I think it's just un-American. Also, I'd like to say, I have, I take umbrage with Councilman Stychos' remarks about the Red Brigade. There are, all different nationalities have their, you know, issues. The IRA blew up Lord Mountbatten's yacht in the China Sea or Indian Ocean. It was a turret tried to assassinate Pope Paul. So I don't think we should designate one ethnic group and paint them with one brush. Should I take that as a definite insult? Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilman Stychos.
While it may not have been well said, that was my point of bringing up the Red Brigades is just the point that you made, that every, we could find bad people in every ethnic group, and we wouldn't exclude the whole ethnic group, including Timothy McVeigh in the American ethnic group. So I apologize if that came up across wrong, but that was, my point was, every ethnic group. We should not judge a group by the behavior of a small group. We shouldn't ban people from Massachusetts from coming to Rhode Island because of the Boston Marathon bombing.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
No.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman R. Kell?
No.
Councilman Seado?
No.
Councilman Paplos?
Yes.
Councilman Aron Favecchio?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
No.
Councilman Seado?
No.
Councilman Paplos?
Yes.
Councilman Aron Favecchio?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
No.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
No.
No. You went by party lines?
We have 5-3.
5-3, okay. Resolution memorializing the General Assembly to enact enabling legislation that would allow communities to effectively monitor registered sex offenders and limit the number residing at Harrington Hall in Cranston, sponsored by Councilman Favecchio. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve in the second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. This one, I think, will have a little more bipartisan support. So, and this one is more near and dear to my area, that's for sure. This is right in my district. So you've heard all the people talk about it. I think it will take, this involves the state as well, and we will have to get together with some of the state officials and perhaps Speaker Mattiello, but I think it's something that we might as well address now because it's been around since I started five years ago, and it seems to continue.
Okay, Councilman Bott.
Thank you, Council President. I think this is a great resolution, something that Donald Trump might be behind as well. You never know. But I think this problem, it's definitely a problem that can only get worse. I think Providence just enacted something too where sex offenders can't live within 1,000 feet of a school. So now all these sex offenders are out of a house, looking where to go, and hey, Harrington Hall has their doors wide open. So, you know, the problem can only get worse, and I appreciate the effort in putting forth this resolution, and I'd like to be a co-sponsor in this as well.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to be a co-sponsor also.
Councilman Paplakis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'd like to be a co-sponsor as well. I think this is a very well-thought-out and a good resolution. I think that something definitely needs to be done. I commute by Harrington Hall every day, and from the Panhandle is on up to everybody storming out of the building, going wherever they go. I think this is a good resolution, and I will support it.
Okay, Councilman Stychos.
I don't understand enough about this issue, frankly, to vote on it. I might vote on a resolution if it went to committee and I understood it, but I don't understand the various details of providing homeless people with shelter and sex offenders. So I won't, I won't be supporting it. But if people want to educate me, that's fine.
Anybody else? Any discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
No.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman R. Kell?
Yes.
Councilman Seado?
Yes.
Councilman Paplos?
Yes.
Councilman Aron Favecchio?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Just so we don't tell everybody we're voting on party lines, I'm going to say yes. Okay. Report of committees. Ordinance Committee Chairman Aket.
Thank you, President Lee. We have a couple of amendments. We have ordinance 7-15-04, ordinance amendment of chapter 17, 104.030, code of city Cranston, entitled zoning definitions continued 9/17/215 and 10/15/215. It failed in committee. I believe this vote was three nays and two yays. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made to approve in the second. Any discussion on this motion? Councilman Seado.
While I agree that our zoning codes need to get updated, and, you know, coincidentally, there's a couple of projects that are going on, or proposed projects that were going on, and at least one that went through zoning as this process is occurring. As far as trying to update some of these items we're talking about, like heavy mechanical stuff on Macklin and Fletcher and plating at the print works, and where solar farms and wind farms can go up, and distribution centers, I just, I served on the zoning board for about four years, so I understand the process pretty well. It just seems to me that on some of these big industrial usages, that even though in the zoning code it says, yes, they're allowed, yes, it's allowed in A80 by special permit, I tend to agree with what a lot of the people spoke about in that it's got to be a longer process. So I won't be supporting these changes unless there could be a mechanism, perhaps, of it going to zoning either way and having the authority placed in the council to issue a special use permit on a case-by-case basis. That's not how zoning operates currently. Once it's in the zoning codes, I believe an applicant has a choice to either appeal or go to the council. But without those two safeguards in there...
Thank you.
I think that the way the ordinance stands, I would be voting against it unless we could come up to some resolution and language or, you know, we have the solicitor here unless there's a legal mechanism of, again, that it goes to zoning ordinance and the full council.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Well, this is just to enact language and definitions that we didn't have before concerning these issues. It doesn't say that, this doesn't give anyone the, it's the next ordinance that I think you're addressing, Councilman Seado. I don't see why we can't approve definitions and then discuss how they'll be enacted. But I think when you're talking about zoning and controlling it, I think you're talking about controlling it in the council as opposed to giving the, changing the ordinance and allowing the zoning officials to do the work instead of allowing, having everything come before us. So to me, there's, you know, there's a difference between, we don't hear every zoning issue that is done in this city because we obviously don't have enough time to be involved in all that, nor should we. So, but I don't understand why the definitions can't be approved. At least we'll have solar defined in our statute.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Council President, at the proper time, I wanted to make an amendment to the definitions.
Go ahead.
Okay. This basically would be for the Macklin Street and Fletcher Avenue issue that we've had for, since the Civil War, I think. But anyway, I want to further amend the definition of motor vehicle repair by deleting the word minor from the definition of motor vehicle repair and service establishment and adding light, L-I-G-H-T. The remainder of the definition will remain unchanged, and I put that in the form of a motion.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion. Agent, second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Stychos.
Could you state that again? I'm looking at the ordinance and...
Yep. And I may ask for Mr. Lapola, Council President, to come up and explain it, if he would.
I don't know if we have enough time tonight.
We're amending, we're deleting the word minor from the definition of motor vehicle repair and service establishment and adding the word light.
It's nice that my reputation precedes me, but...
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. The original ordinance calls it minor. We created a definition called motor vehicle repair heavy, just to keep it in consistency. When somebody's looked at the ordinance, it was suggested, do we have motor vehicle repair light, motor vehicle repair heavy?
And at the proper time, Council President, I'll be in the second ordinance, be introducing the table. I have a couple of changes on the table. So that will alleviate some of the issues we've had over the years with those two areas.
All right, so that's, could I, I still, so I'm looking in the code, and it says motor vehicle repair and service establishment minor. And you want to change light? You don't see the word light?
I changed that to light, Steve, because the heavy vehicles in my second amendment later are going to differentiate the two.
Okay, so do you want to change the word minor to light?
Yes, that's the word, the wording that Mr. Lapola...
All right, so it would still be any vehicle less than 10,000 pounds?
The remainder of the definitions will remain the same, unchanged.
Okay.
Don't ask me anymore because I don't know.
Any other discussion on this? Before we take a vote on this amendment, we have to have a public hearing on it. Anybody from the public would like to comment on this amendment? Okay, hearing none. Public comments, discussions closed. Clerk, please take the roll on the amendment.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman R. Kell?
Yes.
Councilman Seado?
Yes.
Councilman Paplos?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Yes. Now we take a vote on the...
Definitions.
...ordinance as amended.
We have a discussion.
A discussion on the ordinance as amended. Any discussion?
Councilman Stychos.
Councilman Stychos.
I also have an amendment. It is to the definition of, just trying to find it here, alternative energy generation. And it's to remove the words ore from biomass. And if I could just explain what that would do, this is, it defines different types of alternative energy, including the use of biomass, burning of biomass for alternative energy. So this would remove burning of biomass from the definition of alternative energy generation.
And that's in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion, agent, second. Any other discussion on this motion? Anybody from the public would like to discuss this, speak on this motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman R. Kell?
Yes.
Councilman Paplos?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Yes.
That's fine. Any other further discussion on the ordinance? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stychos?
Yes.
Councilman Bott?
Yes.
Councilman R. Kell?
No.
Councilman Seado?
No.
Councilman Paplos?
Yes.
Councilman Aron Favecchio?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Councilman O. S. Ray?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Definitions.
Next ordinance, Council President, 7-15-05, ordinance amendment of chapter 17, 20.030, code of city Cranston 2005, entitled zoning, schedule of uses continued 9/17/215 and 10/15/215, failed in ordinance committee, four nays to one yay. Entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Santa Maria.
I'd like to make another amendment at the proper time, Council President.
And Councilman Seado?
Yes, through the chair to the city solicitor. Solicitor, my question is this. If somebody has applied for zoning variance or zone change or permission to operate in a certain zone within the last 90 days to six months, and this ordinance passes as amendment, as amended, do they have the right to come before zoning, again, to seek permission, to... again, to seek permission, to seek a variance or use?
Yes, if it's amended afterwards, it's a new amendment, so they certainly have a right to come back, yes.
They do, so usually the moratorium or whatever that's imposed in the past from zoning, they kind of get two shots at the apple here?
Well, they do, because you, as the council, have the ultimate jurisdiction over the zoning uses, so you've made an amendment to it, so they, there can be a reapplication.
Is there case law that states that?
Well, if you look at the Rhode Island statute, and I have to look at any case law, but if you look at the statute, ultimately, it's the council, not even their committees, that has ultimate jurisdiction on the amendment of the uses, the full council. So, that's by Rhode Island statute. So, I think it's more statutory than case law.
So, let's just take the example of the solar array in A-80. Right now, the way it stands, the applicant could either go to zoning to get the special use, or they can choose to come to the full council, correct?
Well, when you've amended the use, then you, they can start again at the zoning board, correct? I mean, they still have to start the process.
Okay, but they do have an option of coming in front of the full council?
Well, there's an argument to be made, and again, that might be more case law, that they actually have to start the administrative process from the beginning.
But the way this amendment reads now is they just go to zoning and that's it, right? It's, zoning tells them yes or no?
Well, the council ultimately, though, has the jurisdiction of the use and the passage of the use.
Pete, Peter?
I don't think that's what it is.
Peter, can you respond to that?
Council President, do you want to have a moment?
Yes. Yep. Discussing strategy.
In response, let's do first of all, right now, in A-80, it is a use not allowed in A-80. So, that they can't, technically, the only thing they could do is go to the zoning board and review and ask for a use variance, and those, you only should be granting use variance if there is no other practical use of them. It's a fruitless exercise. If this is passed, it would make solar farms, solar power, a use by right, they can then go through the normal permitting process, which would be development plan review, and then major land development through the plan commission.
And that's it? That's the final say, because it's permitted now, correct?
It would, if this passes, this would go, again, it would go through the development plan review and plan commission, because it would be a use allowed.
So, zoning would be completely bypassed?
Well, zoning would, zoning isn't being bypassed, zoning would not, zoning has currently no authority in it. They would continue to have no authority in it, because it's a use not allowed.
You're going to rename, give them a right to make... Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. I think the confusion is that, I mean, just changing this ordinance to allow solar in the zone would just give them the right to seek the permits, and then they would have to go through a pretty lengthy process. Mr. LaPaula, how long would that process take and what would entail in particular?
It depends, it depends on the project. I mean, it's, we go through a public hearing process, and sometimes it's one meeting, sometimes it's two meetings, but sometimes it depends. This one, I can't tell you until we do the review, until there's an application coming before us, we're in the process of vetting it, we'll open up the hearing.
And are there any other agencies that have to review the, what they do? State, federal, whatever?
For this particular project, bear in mind, each project is unique to himself. On this particular project, when you do go through the review, there's wetlands on, wetland, there's wetlands on site, so it requires a wetlands permit, and because of the amount of land being used, the size of the project requires a stormwater permit, a ripley for Rhode Island Stormwater Permit, it's a combined permit, it's currently under review by D E M.
And that's it, as far as you know?
There is no D O T, as far as I know, there's no siting facility, there's no, you know, electric siting facility, so it would be development plan review, plan commission, which is staff review, and the city review, and then D E M review for wetlands, water quality, drainage, and stormwater management. We do the same thing.
And would there be public hearings for the neighbors?
Development plan review, it's a public meeting, and which notice has already been sent out, because we've continued it pending what happens here. Everybody within 200 feet is notified of the meeting. For the major land development, there is an advertisement placed in the paper 14 days prior, and everybody within 100 feet is notified by, of the property line is notified with, by certified mail, and that certified mail is going out.
Councilman Asido?
These meetings, Peter, they're held during the day, not after hours in most cases?
They're held, meetings like most, like all meetings of boards, zoning, us, development plan review is during the day, except for the actors and staff. Development plan review is during the day, 9 o'clock on Wednesdays, first and third Wednesday, most, most days, and the plan commission is usually the first Tuesday at 7 o'clock of every month.
Councilman Box?
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair, Mr. LaPaula. How many A-80 plots of land do you think could support this, a project of this magnitude?
Of this magnitude?
Yes.
If I was tracking these in my mind, my guess is less than four or five.
Because the reason why I ask is one of the...
Can I explain why?
Sure.
Is the, what you need, there's many different ways of phrasing it, but you need sort of a sweet spot for these types of solar projects, what you need is the availability of land without much development constraint, and more importantly, what you need is proximity to the grid. The, what I've been told is that if you get more than a quarter of a mile from the grid, from, it's not your telephone, the little power lines, it's your high-power lines, the cost of constructing the interconnect between the solar arrays and the grid becomes cost prohibitive. So, that what you're looking at for A-80 land is a sizable piece of A-80 land that I can run through where I know where they are, I don't want to...
Sure.
And proximity to the grid. And there's not many pieces, I can, I'll tell you after quietly, is, there's not many pieces when I run them through, you know, through my, my sort of internal computer, though we would have that.
And the reason why I ask is someone brought up the Cully and concrete plant earlier this evening, and I think it's really beyond apples and oranges. But, you know, one of the concerns is, well, if we approve this, then you could put these things anywhere, and there really isn't a whole lot of places in Cranston that this could get put into. I think also the major difference with the Cully and concrete plant, if I recall correctly, is that not only would they be generating concrete in a float plane, but there'd be trucks moving in and out of a highly dense neighborhood quite often during the day, where here you have a solar farm, hopefully below 40 decils, and, you know, there'd be, basically after the installation, for 20 years, there'd be little or no movement on the site. So, I think it's, you know, bearing, again, apples and maybe grapefruits this time. So, thank you, Mr. LaPaula.
Councilman Akado?
Thank you, Council President. I'm not going to deal in particulars, I'm just going to deal in the general, generalities of the situation. I feel that we are circumventing the process of the zoning board and the council if we pass this measure. I know that the zoning board voted down the metal plating variance to, to run their business, and even though they were voted down, they still purchased the property for $1.4 million without appealing that decision to the Superior Court. Did they know this was in the play with the planning commission? Is there a deal already cut with the administration? I don't know that, but, you know, there's a lack of transparency here in this whole process. We're circumventing the zoning board, circumventing the public input, not hearing from the people, I think is a dangerous road to travel. One of the, one of the speakers during the hearing talked about spot zoning, and I think that's exactly what's going on here. I think the administration didn't get its way with the zoning board turning down the operation of the plant, and now they're going to bypass the zoning board in order to allow it to open. With the fact of the solar panel industry, I'm not opposed to solar, I'm welcoming, I'm glad they're here, coming to Cranston. I, my issue is where it's going. I think we're making a big mistake allowing that facility to be built on Hope Road. I think there's other areas here in the city we can allow those solar panels to be constructed. I think Councilman Stikos really had talked about Sevi Gagi, and I, that would be a wonderful place. But, we know that's 70 acres of pristine fertile agricultural land, and once the solar panels are built there, it's changed forever. Cranston loses that agricultural land, and that's my concern, so I'm not going to be supporting this ordinance for a number of reasons. I think there's something up the sleeve here, I think there's a major, major bypass circumvention of the system, and this is how that administration operates time and time again, and I will not support this ordinance. Thank you.
Councilman Stikos?
I'd like to echo some of the concerns that Councilman Akado just made, but first, I'd like to, I'd like to address the gentleman from the metal plating plant, and first, I appreciate your coming here. I will not be voting for changing the, from a special use permit to a, a right to have metal plating in M1 and M2. And the reason that I'll, it's, I don't know enough about this to, to know whether metal plating has truly changed to a safe process, and the, we're being asked to make a decision on that issue, which is an important issue, based upon the planning director saying, things have changed in metal plating, it's not as dangerous as it used to be. And that's just not enough information. So, and we, we, you know, we've had multiple hearings on this, and Attorney Bolton complimented us for having multiple hearings on it, and quite honestly, we've had multiple hearings on it because it's been so difficult to unscramble this proposal and figure out what the changes are, when, if we had been given a summary sheet that said, okay, here's what we're doing with animal daycare, and here's why, and here's what we're going to do with metal, we want to do with metal plating, and here's why, and here's some background. I don't know if metal plating has changed in the, in the last 20 years or not, so if I vote for this and it goes through, then down the road, we're stuck, if it's a problem. So, I think that's, that's really a real, a real problem with this proposal. I do have some amendments to offer. One is on animal daycare, and I think we, in this proposal, animal daycare is being permitted in a wide variety of zones that are close to residential neighborhoods, and I think barking dogs can be a real, just horrible if you got to put up with that all day. So, I would have this amendment to offer in the use table for animal daycare. In A, in the zone A-80, to change it from special use to prohibited, so from S to N. In C1, C2, and C3, where the proposal establishes it by right, I would change that, those three neighborhood commercial districts from yes to no. And then finally, in open space, where the proposal changes it from S1, S, the zone is S1, the open space cells, to change that from special permit to no. Let me just go over that again. A-80 change, one, do you want to vote one at a time? That's, that'll be better? All right, I think that's a good suggestion.
First one?
I'll withdraw my proposed amendment, and my amendment would be to change an animal daycare under A-80, two-acre residential, from special permit to not permitted.
Second. Motion made in second, any discussion on this motion? Just one question. Councilman Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Just a question through the chair to Councilman Stikos.
I'm sorry, before you continue, we have need of public comment.
Okay, good.
Anybody from the public would like to speak on this particular item?
Mr. Council President, it's Mike Seapy, once again. When was the master plan passed?
2012, I believe. Mr. LaPaula, am I correct?
The new master plan?
2010 or 2012.
Well, go ahead. I'm going to push you. Okay, you can push me. I wouldn't do that. It was adopted by the city in 2010, accepted by the state 2012.
12.
Okay, and now, how come we're making changes now to the master plan? I, well, you want to change the, the usage? Yes, yes, you may. That was my question. All right. Can I answer that?
Yes, please do.
Is, what we're proposing, there's two, there's two components, there's the master plan, and then there's zoning. The master plan is the master plan, it's the comprehensive plan, it's a, it's a, it's basically how we see the future growth of Cranston. Zoning is a completely separate document. What we're proposing to do, we're not proposing to amend the master comprehensive plan, we're proposing to amend the chapter, it's title 17 of the city code, it's the zoning ordinance. The only things that are before you tonight is amendment to zoning, amendments to zoning.
It's not the master ordinance.
My only other question is, if you want to do a variance, you go in front of the zoning board, correct? All right, and if you want to change the zone, you could come in front of the city council?
Correct.
So, why are we changing anything? They have the right to go to the zoning board if they want to have a variance, which the plating company did, and it was denied, and now, if you want to have a change of zone, you come in front of the city council, or you come in front of the ordinance committee? I don't understand why we're making all these changes. Thank you.
Stikos' amendment, right? You had a question on the minute?
Oh, I had a question that...
Yes, Councilman Favecchio.
Sorry. Through, through the chair again to Councilman Stikos. Does this mean that you're going to vote in favor of the ordinance, once it's, if it's amended?
I don't know.
I mean, you're asking us to make an amendment. We've done one for Councilman Santa Maria, now you're asking us to do this one, I'm just curious, I'm trying.
Well, I, I think, I don't know whether I'm going to vote on, for final passage, it's going to depend on how other votes come out, but I think some of these things are necessary to do, and if the council expressed its opinion on things like animal daycare, and the whole thing goes down, then it can come back, and we've given the planning department direction on, and the mayor, direction on where we think these other things can go. But there's so much in here, there's so many different things, that until we separate stuff out, it's...
Well, it seems like we had three issues, really. We had the, the Councilman Santa Maria's issue, the plating issue, and the solar issue, and the dog daycare. Four issues, sorry.
But, well, I have other issues, too.
Well, let's vote on the dog daycare. Council, you recognize, Councilman Asido?
Yes, Council President. I would, I agree with Councilman Stikos in that if you separated these out all individually, and you could take a vote on the changes all individually, then, you know, if you like two of the three, or three of the four, how many... two out of three, or three out of four, how many we have, five out of six, you know, you're not jeopardizing not passing, you know, some of the ones you like because there's one you don't like. And that's my problem with this ordinance as written. If each one was different, and it was a doggy, doggy, doggy daycare first, and then you went down the line, then you would have a clear explanation, and you wouldn't shoot down the entire comprehensive plan thing or the change just because you didn't like one thing.
Mayor Toulson, Santa Maria, can you hand it up?
That's why I asked at the last meeting, the workshop, that I reserved the right to put them in as an ordinance. And I thought everybody was going to follow my lead, but nobody did because I'm looking at the introductions. I think, Steve, you put one in. But I have no problem voting with them as separate ordinances, but, I mean, this is important to, I was a Board Five Councilman for eight years, and this is important to me. Macklin, and it's not the flavor of the month, it's not getting all the press or anything like that, but it's an important part of the zoning change. I, you know, I don't think animal daycare is important as this. To be perfectly honest with you, I don't even know why we're discussing animal daycare. But that's my issue. So if this fails, I'm still going to push forward with my changes in form of an ordinance. So, you know, how it falls where it may. Should I bother putting in my ordinance, my amendments? I don't know. I'm going to see how this goes.
Any other discussion? Let's do the daycare. Councilman Nocido again.
Well, I believe the administration and Peter are talking to see if that could be accomplished somehow. So at this point, I don't know if we can take a five-minute recess, maybe?
Well, they're behind closed doors, in a smoke-filled chamber. So I guess we can take five minutes.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. I'm so tired.
I love you. I love you.
Each amendment separately, and vote on it separately. And the amendments that pass, we will put together as one ordinance, and we will vote on that. And we'll have to have a public hearing again on each portion that we're voting on.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Could we list all four amendments, or put a title to them, and then have the public speak on, for four minutes, on any of the amendments, all four, or just one separately, rather than have them speak on each amendment separately?
All right. Do we have to give them a right to speak on each amendment separately, I believe?
So we'd have to, so we're going to have to introduce amendment one at a time, or if we can?
Yes.
All right.
I'll introduce... All right, yeah, and they can talk on any one of the amendments that we're going to be discussing. You don't have to talk one at, you know, on each separate one. We could talk about the animal daycare, the solar farm, the plating company and the print works, Fletcher in Macklin Street.
That's it.
So those are the four things. Anybody in the public would like to comment on any one of those four items? And this time, four amendments, not eight?
Through the chair?
Yes.
The only, the only two, the only amendment that has been made to this time has been from Councilman Stikos, seconded by Councilman Arquette regarding the animal daycare.
Okay.
Council President?
Yes.
Could we each make our amendment and get a second on them?
Yes, good idea. Make an amendment.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Going back to Councilman Stikos' motion, originally he had proposed several zones to be amended, and there was discussion of taking each zone one at a time. Is that still what you wish to do?
Yes.
So we currently only have the A80. That would be your first amendment.
Any discussion on the A80?
But, but, yes. As to daycare, dog?
Doggy daycare, animal daycare, whatever you want to call it. Councilman Nocido?
So, so we're discussing the doggy daycare. We have an amendment for the doggy daycare. Then we're going to vote yes or no whether that amendment on doggy daycare passes, and that's it? Then we move on to the next item? If there's any amendments on the plant, so forth and so on? If not, then we vote on approving the plant, and then do we go to solar, and then is that how we're going to do it? I mean, that's...
Basically, that's how we're going to do it.
That's how I envisioned doing it, so...
So you want to do it one at a time?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
You can add that as amendment, Councilman.
I didn't, and I didn't understand what you said about, and then it'll all have to be another hearing?
No, we're going to take each item separately. We're going to, after public hearing, we'll vote on each item separately.
Okay.
The items that pass, will be put into one final ordinance, and we'll vote on that.
Well, can't we do one, one at a time?
All tonight.
All tonight. Get all night. It's okay.
All right. So Councilman Stikos, Councilman Stikos is going to put in his amendment?
Yes, please.
Then we're going to have discussion on it? Or we're going to open around?
I have discussion on it.
All right.
Councilman Stikos, you have the floor.
All right. I'll start again with the animal daycare, changing the A80 designation from special use permit to not allowed.
Second, again.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? I have one comment. Animal daycare, are they talking about dogs in particular? I assume. And if you're talking about dogs, and it's a farm, about other animals? Can you raise chickens? Can you raise, or just no dogs, but any other animal?
Is that for me?
Just dogs excluded?
No.
Or you can't?
Well...
You can't have a kennel?
You can't have an animal daycare facility.
Period, okay.
For, which is defined in the definitions that we just voted for as domestic animals. I don't know if a cow is a domestic animal or not, but...
I think cows are...
Domesticated, certainly.
Domesticated animals that do not reside...
It doesn't say, it doesn't say cated. I don't...
Yeah.
All right. Animal daycare, according to definition, facility providing care for domesticated or domestic animals that do not reside in the facility. All right? They are present primarily during daytime hours, and that, and that do not board. An animal daycare may include incidental grooming. That's the definition we're voting on. Any comment? Councilman Nocido?
Can it be a 24-hour facility?
No, it can only be during daytime. Councilman Santa Maria?
I want a public comment on this.
Yeah. Any public comment on animal daycare? No dog lovers out there? No? Okay. All right, Noah, anybody else in the council want to speak on this? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Seale?
Yes.
Councilman Frost?
Yes.
Councilman Andrew Lott?
Yes.
Councilman Seale?
Yes. Yes. Next on the agenda would be the solar farm.
No, Councilman Stikos has more amendments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Continue, Councilman Stikos. I thought we were done.
Well, what I would like to do is, is change C1, C2, and C3 from Y to N, from permitted to not permitted for animal daycare. Now, do you want to do those, each one separately, or? No, I think they can, they still remain to the same thing.
I'll second that.
They're all neighborhood commercial.
I'll second.
Motion made in second. Anybody from the public like to speak on this? Hearing none? Anybody from the council like, under discussion? Councilman Botts?
It's my recollection that usually a fast-food establishment is zoned, what, C2, C3, right around there? Because C4 is the up where you need a drive-through, right? So we're going to allow fast-food establishments and whatnot, but not animal daycare. So I will, I think I'll be voting against this amendment. Because this doesn't necessarily mean that the animals are outside. That's right, they can be inside and being cared for. So, I don't know. I don't know how it will...
Quick question.
Any other discussion? Councilman Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. One quick question through the chair of the sponsor. Are there any, would we be putting someone out of business doing this? Is there anyone that's currently operating one of those businesses in a C1, 2, or 3?
I can't answer that, but it's a completely new definition, so I don't know how we could put somebody out of business.
So, I mean, is there any, yeah, I just, that was my only thought. I just don't want to put someone out, you know?
I think they'd be grandfathered in, wouldn't they?
Okay.
Councilman Nocido?
That's what I was going to say. I think they would be grandfathered in by current use, so, until...
Okay.
Do you, Councilman Stikos, do you know of one that's in a C1, 2, 3 zone now in Cranston?
I don't. Okay. Any other discussion?
We have...
Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Seale?
No.
Councilman Seale?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
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 Yes. Next, next amendment?
The next amendment is, again, animal daycare, to change a special use permit in an open-space zone, S1, from a special use permit to not allowed in open space.
Okay. Is, motion made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, any, anybody from the public like to comment on this? Hearing none? Any discussion? Oops. Name and address for the record, please.
Lynn Harrington, the West Bayland Trust. I'm confused, actually, of what we're actually voting on right now. This is, you know, I'm sorry, I've tried to pay attention, but splitting them up and adding and revising uses is quite, quite confusing. So could we have maybe a reading of exactly what the ordinance is, so that we have a clue? Sorry.
Okay.
You want me to restate it? Yes. This is, the proposal is to have animal daycare in opens, allowed in open space if a special use permit is granted by the zoning board. That's the mayor's proposal. My amendment would change it from being allowed with a special permit to not being allowed in open-space zones.
Okay. Do you, do you understand it now? Okay. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none? Oops, Councilman Nocido?
Through the chair, Councilman Stikos. Just, how would you have an animal daycare facility in open space? Would that mean like the city's leasing land to somebody for that particular purpose?
What was, the example that was given at the meeting we had was that the, there are some parcels that are privately owned that are open space, like the Boy Scout Reservation. That was the example that was given. I don't know what other ones there are, but I'm looking at the map and...
Thank you, Council President. I don't know if I'm going to support this because, because, you know, this perhaps might be overkill to totally prohibit daycare in open space. I think, right now, it's allowed for permit, correct, Councilman, by the zoning board?
Well, that's the proposal. It's not, there's no definition of animal daycare now in the code.
So basically, what you're doing is not allowing, currently it would be allowed by permit, and you're just going to delete that?
I don't know what currently it would be allowed as. All I know is what the proposal...
Well, if you're putting the amendment in, there must be an allowance without your amendment.
There's, in the code, there's nothing now referred to as animal daycare.
I see. Then you want to prohibit it in open space, correct?
Right.
But my feeling is, I'd leave it up to the zoning board. I have full faith in the zoning board whether to allow that or not to allow that. Why completely prohibit it? There may be some necessity down the road, perhaps.
You know, that's the legitimate position.
I can't support that. Thank you.
Just prohibit it and not suffer barking dogs anywhere. It's a special, it's, right now, it's special.
Ready to vote?
Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, let's vote on that particular amendment. No in C1, 2, and 3.
That one's already been approved. The current motion is changing the use in S1 from special permit to no.
Okay. Clerk, take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
No.
Councilman Seale?
No.
Councilman Fox?
No.
Councilman Seale?
No.
Councilman Fox?
No.
Councilman Seale?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
The motion ties.
So it's dead.
Okay.
So that stays the way it is.
Any other amendments?
Well, I'll, metal plating? We do metal plating. I don't have any other amendments on animal daycare, so...
All right. Let's go to solar next, because that seems to be the hottest issue. Anybody from the public like to speak on solar farms?
Here we go.
And as I said earlier, four minutes, not eight like the last time.
I didn't realize I spoke that long.
Through the chair?
Yes.
There's no new amendment to that provision in the ordinance. We've already spoken on it as originally proposed.
There's no amendment?
Oh, there's no amendment?
No, not on, no, not on solar. We've already had public speaking on that.
I'm sorry. Are we voting to separate it from the...
No.
No?
We're taking amendments individually.
Okay.
I thought we were separating...
That's what I thought, too.
Well, that one doesn't need to be, I guess, because it's not being amended.
We still need...
Before we go any further, any clarification on this? I thought we were voting on each item separately. All right, each amendment separately.
Yeah, I want to vote separately on each one. I don't have to make an amendment.
Okay, is there any, so there's no amendments on solar?
Unless Councilman Stikos wants to make a...
Yeah, Councilman Santa Maria?
Council President, I think we have to make an amendment to introduce an amendment.
Yeah, you're right. She just clarified.
Can I introduce my amendment, then? Get that...
Go right ahead.
All right. The definition amendment passed before. Correct, Madam Clerk? My definition amendment passed before.
That's correct.
All right, so I want to make an amendment to the scheduled uses motor vehicle repair and service establishment heavy from yes in M1 to special permit in M1. I put that in form of a motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion from the public on this particular motion? Hearing none? Any discussion from the council members on this motion? Councilman Stikos?
Your proposal is to change it from yes in M1 to special use?
Yes. Which will go into my definitions for the difference between small and heavy truck.
And do you plan to do that for M2, or just...
Yes, but you were doing them one at a time, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Seale?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Fox?
Yes.
Councilman Seale?
Yes.
Yes. Also, Council President, on the scheduled uses motor vehicle repair and service establishment heavy in an M2 zone, a change from a yes...
I do have amendment on metal plating to change from yes in M1 to special permit.
Second. Motion been made to change from, to a special permit on the metal plating in M1. And a second. Any discussion? Anybody from the public like to comment on this first? All right. Anybody from the council like to speak on this? Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. So, I'm trying to understand this. So, this will make it a special permit in the zone that that gentleman, Print Works property?
Well, I'm not sure whether his, the Print Works is M1 or M2, but I'm, like Richard did, I'm going to offer the same amendment for M2 after the M1 amendment.
So, my question is, where does that property fall? Is that in one of those two zones? I don't know if Mr. Lapola is saying yes.
Mr. Lapola may know. It's on M1.
And so, he would have to get a special use permit.
Councilman...
Peter.
Fox. Peter, I have a question for you. Through the chair, Mr. Lapola. Are there any, do you know, to your knowledge, if there's any other metal plating facilities in Cranston?
At least one that we're aware of.
Okay.
Liberia Street.
In that zones?
I think it's, well, it's M-zone, I can't remember if it's M1 or M2. I think it's M1.
Okay. Thank you.
Peter, stay there.
Councilman Nocino? Through the chair, Mr. Lapola. So, the only, the only difference is the applicant went, applied for it, and got denied. Now, what will this do for somebody in that case?
In that case, if, if you move it from a use by special permit to a use by right, because it's a use by right, you could establish that use.
All right. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Councilman San Maria?
Council President, you told me you had visited the site.
Yes, I did.
Just let me ask one question off of that. How did you feel about it as far as a detriment to people's health and the smell coming down Cranston Street and affecting the businesses in Knightsville?
I'm glad you asked me that question. I grew up and was right across the street from the Cranston Print Works, on Flower Avenue. I could see the entire Print Works from my second-floor tenement. I spent approximately 35 years there before I got married. My mother worked in the Print Works. I played in those swamps along the river behind the Print Works. I watched that water run whatever dye they were throwing away that day, red, purple, green, yellow. I had a great childhood. I visited that facility. First of all, I was shocked on the size of it. It's almost the length of a football field, that building. Clean, absolutely clean. Everything was swept down, there was no garbage or anything around. And the man showed me part of his operation. It's a little chain-type device that went through conveyor belts, different things. It would wash the pot, then dry the pot, then put some kind of a powder on the piece. And the last thing would be the plating part. He said he's got 50 employees currently, he said earlier, and he can hire up to 100. And the reason why he's coming to Cranston, he needs more room. Also, he said he was interested in the parking lot, redoing the entire parking lot in the back there. He spoke to the neighbors. The neighbors all seemed to be in agreement that it'd be a good idea to get the Print Works in operation again, manufacturing something. I was, honestly, I was impressed. I was impressed with the, what he told me, I was impressed with his sincerity when he spoke to me. He wasn't evasive, he answered every question, and that company is one of the top 50 in the United States as far as metal, metal plating. He showed me documents that he got on it. So, am I against something like this? No. The zoning board was, though. But when they went before the zoning board, from what I understand, none of the neighbors were there to argue against it. Just the historical society, which can't even see the place, and a few other people who really didn't live in the area.
May I ask one other question?
Yes, go ahead.
You mentioned the historical society. Is anyone here from the historical society? I know Councilman Akado had told me...
Yeah, I'm a member of the historical society also.
Okay, so, I hear 50, 50 new jobs. I hear a clean... I'm at the floor. I'll let you talk in a minute. I hear 50 new jobs, 100, actually, when they bring the 50 other people there. It's on the other side of the river. It's a clean establishment. The guy's never had any penalties against him, or fines. Again, I hear 50 new jobs, I hear 100 jobs. I hear the council president telling me he's went on a tour of the place and it's clean as can be. And no one here from the historical society, except you. So, what's your objections?
No. May I speak, Mr. Council President? Thank you. I came as a member of the zoning board, one of those individuals that cast... Sorry. You have to give your name. Steve Carrera, zoning board. Sorry. The issue was that there was a metal, it said metal plate area. There was a mischaracterization at the time. The establishment is primarily invested in what they call powder coating, which is a much cleaner process, okay? And given that, and the objections of the historical society, and I think there was one or two other neighbors that were opposed to it, we had decided at that point in time to oppose it and vote it down. And it was a unanimous vote. But again, to, basically, to the powder coating issue as opposed to the metal plating issue. Anyone, and the council president just outlined some of the things that he did at the Print Works as a young man. It has metal plating and has a bad rap. The way it used to be done and the way it's done now are two different things, but like I said, Mr. Dufusch's business is primarily invested in powder coating at this point in time. So, had we been given those facts, I'm not saying that the vote would have been different, but I'm telling you that it would have put a different light on the, on the subject.
So, can I, so can I assume that the historical society is not against this now?
No, you cannot assume that, because I'm not speaking for the historical society. I'm only speaking for what was presented to the zoning board that evening.
I'm not questioning the zoning board's decision. I'm just saying, the objections I heard, I need some sort of reason.
I can't speak for the historical society.
Since they're not here, since they're not here to voice their objections, I hear silence.
Can't speak for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Nocino?
Yes, through the chair, the Councilman San Maria. Also, that day, when we did the tour, we learned that there is going to be, he already has space leased out to a theater company, I guess, that does stage props, and I believe there's another, at least five, maybe possibly 10 to 15 employees there. And then, I guess, he also plans to lease office space or something else there, because there's excess space. So, I mean, not only are you looking at the potential of 100 jobs there, 15 jobs from the prop company, and maybe other jobs from the space being rented as office space or whatever might be able to go there, so...
Councilman Paploskis?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I along took a tour with Council President Lanny and Councilman Nocino, and I'm impressed with the amount of investment that Dufusch wants to make into Cranston. These buildings are not historical buildings. I believe they were built in the '70s, and I think the Print Works stopped using them sometime in the '90s, if I'm correct. So, very happy to see some potential development there, and somebody invested in the neighborhood. I know the restaurants that are around there, and the other local businesses will benefit from it. I didn't smell any smells, I didn't see anything dirty about it. I think bringing jobs to Cranston is a positive, so I'm definitely for it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right. This is on the amendment. All right, Councilman Paploskis?
What is the amendment, again, to clarify? Is it to change it to a use by right, or to a special permit?
Special permit. Special permit, I believe. Am I correct, Councilman Stikos?
The motion, the motion was from Councilman Stikos, seconded by Councilman Akado, in an M1 zone from a permitted use to a special permit.
Okay. Everybody understand the question? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilor Akado?
No.
Councilperson Seale?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Motion passes.
All right. Now, we move on to... Is that it? I think that may be it.
No. It's a special permit.
City clerk?
I have no other motions pending at the moment.
Oh, Councilman Stikos?
Motion to...
Council, Council President, I think there was confusion on that vote. I asked for a revote.
Motion, motion to reconsider?
Reconsider? Second. Well, only people who voted in the affirmative...
The council made the motion to reconsider.
Councilman Nocino made the motion reconsider. I think he voted in the affirmative.
I voted in the affirmative.
Yes, he did.
Council President, can we re-do that amendment one more time?
We need to vote on the motion to reconsider first. You need a second, I believe.
I'll second it first.
All right, for a discussion?
So, discussion on the motion.
All right. Councilman Nocino, why would, can you explain the motion and why?
No, I, I was in, I'm in favor of them doing plating. I believe by voting yes, I took that right away from him.
You made it harder for him.
Is that correct?
Is that the correct interpretation?
Okay, so, so that would mean a no vote would have been for him to give him the right to do the plating. So, that's why I made the motion to reconsider.
Okay. Take a vote on the motion to reconsider.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilor Akado?
Yes.
Councilor DeRico?
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 Yes.
Now, we're going to take a vote. Again.
On the amendment, correct?
On the amendment. Clerk, please take, oh, you want us...
Question, question?
Councilman San Maria?
Explain the amendment?
A no vote will keep it the way it is.
Which is?
By right.
It's by right. Keep it the way it is in the proposal.
Right. And a yes will add another, will add another requirement by special permit.
Correct. It'll, it'll keep it the way the current law is.
Okay.
Yes, can we just repeat that one more time? I know I've been up since 4:30, so, and I'm going to bed at 4:30 tonight. That's another story.
I think it'll be 4:30.
So, on his amendment, a vote, a vote yes would be to...
Special permit.
Would be a special permit.
A vote no would leave it as is.
If you go before the zoning board, and the way Mr. Carrera was talking, it would be a different outcome, probably, but...
So, a special permit would be that anybody who goes in there after this gentleman leaves in 50 years...
No, no. He can't go in there and do it.
He can't, a yes vote would be he can't go in there and do the metal plating? Okay. Thank you.
One other clarification.
Councilman Favecchio?
Sorry, Council President. Just through the chair to Councilman Stikos, is the definition bothering you more than, I mean, after Mr. Carrera's explanation of what they do there? It doesn't, it sounds like it's not, the metal plating, you know, your father's metal plating company.
Well, I'm not, I am concerned about that metal plating company, but also all metal plating companies. They're, the former Sebagi property in my ward is either M1 or M2, and as I said earlier, absent knowing more about metal plating, I don't want metal plating there.
Even though it's more on metal coating, I mean, it seems like it's a different process, but...
It may be, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Akado?
My issues about the metal plating business, I'm sure that there's been changes and upgrades. My position is circumvention of the process. We have, there's a process set, and there's certain parameters we must act under, and it seems like they're circumventing those issues. There's a councilman here who had an amendment for a special permit on Maklin Street, you know, if this, for some reason, this is a different issue for him, but I'm here to represent the process, and I'll be supporting Councilman Stikos' amendment, and if his amendment fails, I'll be voting against the original bill. Thank you.
Councilman Bott?
Thank you, Council President. I'll be voting, how did I vote last time? Let's see. No, again, because I'm here supporting jobs, and I just heard that from the president of the company that they could be adding, was it Council President? I can't remember now, but adding 50 jobs to the city of Cranston. And I don't know how we can vote against adding 50 jobs in the city. You know, the process, again, has been refined, and, again, clean facility. So, I'm in support of jobs. I'll be voting no, and which means yes, I think.
Councilman San Maria?
And to answer, Councilman Akado was claiming, my amendment didn't make 50 new jobs.
This one makes 50 new jobs.
50 new jobs. You can't turn your head on that, Councilman Akado.
I will.
I'm going to vote for it, because I want to see the mayor cut another ribbon. All right, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilor Akado?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilman Bass?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilman Bass?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
No.
Councilor DeRico?
The amendment failed.
Councilman Stikos?
Yeah, I won't offer the one on M2, assuming that the outcome would be the same. But I would like to, on the alternative energy, which is in A80, change that from special use to in, to no. So, that's my amendment.
Second. Motion made second. Any discussion? Councilman San Maria?
Could we define alternate electric generation?
Councilman Siller?
And to answer, Councilman Arquette was claiming, my amendment didn't make fifty new jobs. This one makes fifty new jobs. Fifty new jobs. You can't turn your head on that, Councilman Arquette.
Uh, I will. It should be in the process.
I'm gonna vote for it, because I wanna see the mayor cut another ribbon. All right, Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Paploskas?
No.
Councilman Ariarra Pacheco?
No.
Councilman Wester Siller?
No.
Councilman O'Keefe?
No.
Councilman Wester Siller?
No.
Councilman O'Keefe?
No.
Councilman O'Keefe?
The amendment failed. Councilman Stikos?
Yeah, I won't offer the one on M2, assuming that the outcome would be the same. But I would like to, on the alternative energy, which is in A80, change that from special use to N, to no. So, that's my amendment.
Second? Motion made secondly, discussion, Councilman Siller?
Could we define alternate electric generation? Mr. Lapola, could we ask Mr. Lapola?
This is not solar. This is not solar.
So, this would be windmills?
Want me to read it? Yes. Uh, it would be, alternative energy generation means any facility or installation such as a windmill, hydroelectric unit. Whoops. Another amendment that needs to be made.
Steve, tell me, anything other than solar power, right?
No, it does say solar collecting or concentrating array which is designed or intended to produce energy from natural forces such as wind, water, sunlight, or geothermal heat for off-site use.
For off-site use, is that right? Can you delete it, biomass?
All right, so hypothetically, if we were to vote no on this alternate electric generation, what would happen down on solar power? If solar power is included in the alternative electric generation?
Well, they should have, when they drafted the ordinance, they should have removed solar from the definition of alternative energy, if they were gonna set up a separate definition for solar. But, in the ordinance, they didn't do that, which is why I hesitated when I was reading it. So, I read you what it would be, not necessarily what it should be.
So, why don't we just make...
Councilman Nocito?
So, Councilman Stikos, why don't we just make another amendment, take solar power out of that, and then you can do your amendment?
That's fine with me.
And consider that as a separate category?
Fine with me. Okay. I'm gonna do that? I agree, that would be simpler. All right.
Councilman Stikos, are you withdrawing the motion presently made to amend the definitions?
Um, yeah.
We'll support you.
What I'm saying is, you got solar power in two scheduled uses.
Right.
So, amend it to remove it from alternative electric generation? And then we make, you make the uses for it?
Yeah, I mean, you could remove it, but then if the solar power thing goes down, you might wanna put it back in. So, I think there are probably other properties, agricultural properties or forested properties, that might be attractive. And the special use permit provides another layer of review, or provides a layer of review for these projects.
Uh, Councilman Bott?
Thank you, Council President. I think Mr. Lapola has referenced the fact that this is only one step in the process, and that if this change goes through, then, of course, they have to go through planning and everything else, and for plan design and whatnot. So, there is a layer, I think, of a check, and maybe a special permit would be a second layer, but I think there's a layer there. Uh, the other thing is, we've had multiple, you know, multiple meetings on this. As I can recall, this probably started in August, if I'm not mistaken. And then it was requested, well, can we have a map of where these zone changes, can we get the map? And we do. So, I'm a little incredulous to hear, like, this has been done in secrecy, and this has been steamrolled through, and this is, you know, we've had meetings on this. And I think these meetings have been longer than other meetings we've had where it's been more impactful, where it was the apartments in Garden City, or the Phoenix Glen, or a number of other things have gone through. So, I think, while there is some uncertainty here, I think we've had meetings, we've had discussions, and in the wisdom of the council, we had the workshop last week. So, I'm having a little trouble getting my hand, head wrapped around that. But, in the end, this is something that I think would be beneficial to Cranston. Uh, you know, again, talking about revenues coming into the city, it's an extra net $40,000 in tax revenue coming to the city. We've always, there's been a movement in the United States to move towards green energy. And, you know, this is one project that's not on the backs of the taxpayers. This is a project that's being publicly, privately financed. No rate fees or anything else, like deep water wind. This is something that a private company wants to come in and erect. And, again, I think these are gonna be quieter than the power lines. Anyone that's played golf at Cranston Country Club will know, is you hear those humming power lines, and I think this is gonna be something that's quieter than those. So, again, I think this is a good project, and I'll be voting no to support the yes for right of use. Thank you.
Councilman Siller?
Thank you, Council President. Yes, someone from the West Bay Land Trust the question, or someone that's opposed to it. I can just ask hypothetically, you just don't want it there. I'm getting the thing that you just don't want it there. I've asked for documentation on how it harms the soil. I was supposed to get that tonight. I got nothing. Every project in Western Cranston for the last ten years that I've been a councilman has been met with opposition. Now, we've got solar panels going there. Solar panels, they're not gonna make noise, they're not gonna call the police, they're not gonna call the fire department, they're not gonna send their solar panels to school. Every single time we put a project up in Western Cranston, oh, no, not in my backyard. And I'm getting rather tired of it now, I have to tell you. You pay high taxes enough. If we can get jobs and revenue to cut down on those taxes, everybody's happy. This is a good project. I can't believe that the West Bay Land Trust is against something for green energy that's gonna be, that has conservation. It is a constant nimbie coming from Western Cranston on a solar panel now. Now, I've seen it all. And I had to say that. I've been waiting ten years to say that, but...
Are you, I'm sorry, Councilman. Are you asking her to answer your question?
No, I'm just, I'm just making...
Are you just making a statement?
No one came up until just now. So, can I have an answer? I didn't even get the...
I'd love to answer that. Um, there's actually, there's a couple of pieces to that. We are not against solar power. I think we've demonstrated that. We are not against solar power. We are against a 10-megawatt facility on the historic farm route, which the city has committed some effort, time, and words in the comprehensive plan to supporting. So, to all of a sudden cite an industrial facility, which this will be, in the middle of the historic farm route that we've decided we want to protect, is, I think, a bad move. To at least allow a special permit review on this would allow some public input. Yes, there was a workshop last week, and there is, I believe, a 48-hour notice for this workshop. It's not like the rest of the city and constituents knew that this was happening.
The Sistine Chapel was done quicker than this process has gone through. We've had more meetings, and if people don't come to the meetings... Now, I asked that lady specifically, how does it hurt the soil? She said she was gonna have documentation for me. Don't see anything.
Uh, we're not debating tonight.
Okay.
All right, answer, finish your answer, and we'll move on.
Did you want me to respond to that?
You're the only one who's gonna respond.
I, I'm glad that Councilman Stikos has proposed another layer of review. I realize we have to move, we have to have compromise. So, to have absolutely no, no opportunity to review this if it was by right, I think is an egregious abuse. But to at least allow, you know, that next step of process where you do have to present your case, that, you know, the size of this facility is appropriate for that venue, we have not done that. We have not decided what type of facility that we want in Cranston. We have done absolutely no review of that at all. We have allowed accessory use on homes and farms, which is a terrific thing, and everybody else in the country is doing that. But to cite a 10-megawatt facility on prime farmland on the historic farm route, I think, goes against the comprehensive plan and every other policy we've taken to protect those properties.
Uh, Councilman Arquette, that may...
Thank you. It's now public hearing time unless you're asked a question, Mr. Bolton.
No, I wouldn't ask Council President if the public comment on the amendment was still open. I thought it was...
No public comment? No, Councilman Bolton's absolutely right. We haven't had public hearing comments on this amendment. Continue, Mr. Bolton.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, I thought we were in the middle of that.
And Mr. Doe, also, if you wanna make a comment, you can come forward.
Um, just a couple of comments. On the, on the public participation, let's all take our calendars out right now. December 1st is planning board. December 2nd is site plan review. There is opportunity for people to participate. And with respect to Councilman Stikos' comment that we don't have performance standards, I believe it's on the agenda this evening. It's correct. It has not yet passed yet. But I've stated for the record, and I will state it again for the record. Even if those performance standards do not pass tonight, my client has agreed to meet each and every one of those performance standards should this project go forward. Thank you.
Four minutes.
Be quick. Ah, Doug Stone again. Just for the record, if you, even if you support solar throughout Western Cranston, you can still vote for this amendment. It's still, it will still be allowed. It just puts an extra layer of protection. Okay, if somebody comes forward a year from now, two years from now, four years from now, and says, I wanna do it here, and it's an entirely inappropriate place to put it, you won't be able to stop them. They'll have a right to do it. You can argue over the details, but you can't stop them from doing it. This cannot be just a vote on this one project. You've gotta look forward in the future. And you've gotta give the people a special level of protection. So, if some project, if somebody comes with a project five, 10 years from now, that's completely inappropriate for the site, you have a layer that says, no, you're sorry, you can't do that there. That's all we're asking for. We're not, you know, I, but we expect this project to go through, even with a special permit. But you've gotta look forward down the road. Those projects that are not appropriate for certain areas of Western Cranston, they'll have, they'll do it by right. And we'll argue over the size of the deer fence. And that's about it. And that's why you have to vote this amendment, even if you support solar power, even if you support this project. You've gotta look forward and think of what's gonna happen in the future. You can't just look at the gentleman behind me and say, yeah, I want their money.
That's why I wanted to do it.
You gotta look forward. You're just adding a layer of protection in the future. It's not too much to ask. You know, we're not, you've lost the ballot.
I'm stopping it.
It's just gonna go through. It's just a question of protection, of layers. Allowing people, such as the Conservation Commission, the opportunity to provide rational, informed advice. We don't have that chance now. This is being washed through, regardless of what anybody says. And every time I raise up secrecy, I'm talking about last summer, when I came to town, talked to the planning director, and using his professional ethics, kept man, maintained secrecy. No one knew about this, until Councilman Stikos brought it up in your September meeting. They don't do that in Canada. And they shouldn't be allowed to do it here. That's all I'm saying, that's all I'm asking. I just wanna be treated like they treat their Canadian neighbors. It's not too much to ask. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to comment? Councilman Arquette?
I, as I said before, I live on Hope Road, so you can accuse me of being a nimbie, but there were other people here tonight speaking who live in Edgewood and live in different parts of the city. So, I think this issue is, is much bigger than the fact that I live a couple hundred yards away from this proposed facility. I think it has to do with, as the gentleman just spoke before me, is to not only this particular proposed project, but others, and what we want our city to look like. And I, for one, am not opposed to solar power. I've said it before, it doesn't belong here. It's not gonna do anything to make Cranston a better place to live, throw a few dollars in the city budget, which will be spent quicker than it comes in. And we'll, I'll, every time I pull out of my driveway, I'll see those ugly solar panels and that beautiful chain-linked fence where I used to see, see trees and bushes and wildlife. Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Heather Tibido, 137 Blackmore Ave. It's right up the street. I don't live in Western Cranston. I don't think special permit is a no to solar. I support solar. I think it's a, let's slow down and do our research and do it right. I don't think special permit is an extra layer of bureaucracy. I think it's a, it's a central layer of democracy. And I feel like I have not been well-educated about this, and I know my neighbors, many of my neighbors feel the same way. So, I just think we deserve to know more about it and have public discussion. Again, a no is not, um, special permit is not a no. It's a let's do it right.
Anybody else in the public like to speak?
Councilman Arquette?
Uh, let's see.
I'll defer to Councilman Arquette.
Councilman Vivekio, did you have your hand up?
I'll defer to Councilman Arquette. He had his hand up first.
With about 15, Mr. Thank you, Councilman. I just wanna reiterate that I'm not opposed to solar power, but it's, it's just being put in the wrong place. It belongs somewhere other than the pristine agricultural area of Western Cranston, and I think it's gonna ruin the aesthetics. Also, this doesn't produce any long-term jobs. It's initial construction of the solar panels, and that's it. There's no people on site working at the facility. So, I really think the, we're gonna lose much more than what we're gonna gain. Thank you.
Councilman Vivekio?
Thank you, Council President. I don't know how many jobs an empty field produces, but a couple of comments about what we've heard tonight. Someone mentioned that the roads are in great shape in that area. Well, how would they be if 30 houses go in and there's constant traffic for the next 25 years? Why haven't any farmers come in to buy the property? If farming is such a huge business in Rhode Island, where are all the purchases for this property? That might have been farmers. I don't see any. There aren't gonna be any, any other areas in the city, most likely, that are gonna have the kind of acreage, Ward 1, 2, and 3. I don't think you're gonna see solar farms. It's gonna be pretty difficult to find any, any land big enough. I think that we've seen that it's certainly gonna help preserve the soil, it'll preserve the land. Let's face it, there won't be any development other than that for 20, 25 years. I don't, personally, I don't really care how they do it in Canada. If they take five years to approve a project, and they're not getting very far, and I'm not sure that they'll, they're gonna do well in our system. But, I just think that this, look, this is, this is a progress for the city. I think solar is something new. It certainly will preserve this property and not allow any other type of development, because we know that houses will go in there. I mean, no, these people are not gonna preserve it as a farm or start farming now. They're gonna sell it, make a few million dollars on it, to a developer who's gonna put 30 houses in. And you'll create some jobs for a while, but then you'll have cars, traffic, school buses, rescue runs. And that, and that area is so congested now, we have traffic issues coming down toward Route 37 and Phoenix Avenue. I can't imagine adding 30 houses there and maybe some of the other parcels that may be, yeah, 40, 50, 60 cars added to the mix. I don't think that does anything to preserve the land. I certainly would rather have something as benign and passive there. The dollar figures mentioned the other night were, I think, that we lose $15,000 per house per year when you have a developed property. So, that would amount to $450,000 lost revenue, plus the 40 to 50 that we're talking about with this. So, that's a half a million dollars a year. If the residents in that area wanna, you know, they could pitch in and buy the property, and that would take it off the market. You know, maybe we need to have a special assessment in Ward 4 because of the, that's where all the land is. But I know we're spending an inordinate amount of money on roads in Ward 4 because there are a lot of rural roads that need repair, and there are many more miles of roads there than in some of the other districts, 1, 2, 3, especially Ward 3, 4, 5, I mean, 5 and 6, rather. So I think that this, what would bother me is if we have to put better roads in that area to accommodate more houses, I think that would be a terrible thing because we need millions and millions of dollars right now to repair the roads that we have. We have to go out for bonding to do some roadwork, and we're still going to be short. So I think we need to put progress before politics and do what's best for all the taxpayers, not just a few. And I'll just note that conspicuous by his absence is Mr. Tore Rosso, who lives right near there, who is on the Preservation Society, I mean, the Historic District Commission, who does a lot of historic renovations, excuse me, handled the Chapel View project in terms of overseeing some of the, for the city. And there's no opposition from him. I just think that, you know, this is a very passive use of this property, and to add, it is another layer of bureaucracy. And we could have 10 more hearings like this, and we'll have the same number of people come out. And we've seen nothing that tells us that this is going to destroy the property or destroy the city. So I'm in favor of, I would guess I would have to go against the amendment.
Councilman Osito?
First of all, Councilman, we're kind of losing sight of what we're doing here. It was stated earlier by a previous speaker that said, who was on the council during the boom in Western Cranston, and some of the decisions were good, some of them were terrible, and he regrets the terrible ones. By adding the special permit, it's adding transparency to a project, okay? You might increase it. I mean, whether you're for or against it in this particular location, that's not the point. The point is, is what if they decided to put a solar array at Braden Park? All right? Well, you know, you would want to have the neighbors come in, you would want to have the voice of their opinion, and that's what we're doing here. I mean, it seems like the handwriting's on the wall here, but to add that extra layer of protection isn't a bad thing. We've never done solar before, so we don't know. So maybe if this project or another project comes along, we learn from the mistakes, so we learn that everything's okay. And this particular developer might be the most responsible developer in the world with solar panels, and we might not need that extra level. But that's, I can't see into the future. And I really think that with everything going down and everything, that my special permit would add that extra layer and would make it more transparent. Thank you.
Councilman Pep Lakkas?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just want to say that I can't wait till I'm 58 years old. And the reason I say that is that's 25 years from now, and if this proposal goes through, all this pristine land will now be opening up in Western Cranston. For all we know, 25 years from now, that might be some of the only land left in Western Cranston. So I think the solar panels are better than 30 homes. I think creating green energy is a good thing for the environment, so I would be supporting this by voting no. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
On the amendment?
On the amendment? It's okay, clerk, explain the amendment, then take the vote on it. Oh, before we continue, administration, would you like to say something?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make just a couple of quick comments and urge the members of the council to reject this amendment. Why is a special permit, not, special use permit not the way to go on this? For several months now, for a number of meetings, we've had quite a bit of discussion, despite statements about a lack of transparency. We've had public meetings. We'd have members of the public who saw this advertised in the newspaper, who came to talk to us about a proposal to change the zoning affecting residential land. Yet we've talked quite a bit about farming and farmland. This is residential land. We've talked quite about the specific developer that has proposed one project in this area, what they have or haven't done in Canada, what they might do on this parcel. These are the types of discussions that can cloud the issue. We're talking about zoning and use of residential land. We're talking about 21st century, modern-day farming. As the council president pointed out at one of these meetings, this is farming in the modern day. What we haven't really talked about is the reality that this is residential land, and the alternative is more house lots. This is my backyard. I live just off Phoenix Avenue, a stone's throw away from this parcel. I know what 60 more cars going up and down Hope Road every day will do. My children go to Oaklawn School. Next year, we'll go to Hope Highlands. I know what the children of 30 more houses will do to the class sizes in Hope Highlands Middle School, if that's to be. We need predictability and consistency in our zoning throughout the city. This is a perfectly acceptable use for residential land, and I strongly encourage the council to vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Any other discussion before we vote? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
But I'm sorry, explain exactly where the vote is first. I want to make sure nobody gets confused.
The pending motion has to do with solar power in an 880 zone. It currently, as proposed, is a permitted use. The amendment from Councilman Stikos would require a special permit. A vote of yes will require the special permit. A vote of no will keep it as a matter of right under the proposed ordinance.
All right, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
No.
Councilman Jordan Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Osito?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
No.
Councilman Adams?
No.
Councilman Ossio?
No.
Yes.
It's a tie. It fails.
Okay, we all done with those two ordinances? Move on to the Finance Committee?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Did Councilman Stikos want to reconsider the motion, the vote on definitions?
Well, I think we have to have a vote on the whole package.
Well, on this one, that's correct.
Okay.
Then I'll reconsider.
Then you make the record. Okay. Okay, we're going to vote on the entire package.
As amended?
As amended. Under discussion. Well, first I need a...
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Need a second. Under discussion. Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. I won't be supporting this numerous reasons. Some of my colleagues cited jobs in, at the Cranston Print Works. Cranston Print Work area is a community area. There are a number of churches there, elementary school, restaurants, people eat outside at those restaurants. And I'm looking at the quality of life, especially the air quality in that area. I don't know what the air quality is going to be like if this business starts revving up with 50, 100, or 125 jobs. I don't know what's going to happen. So based on that, you know, I'm not going to be supporting this. Jobs were created at Three Mile Island. Jobs were created at Seabody Guy, and look what we did to the community. So I'll be voting no on that issue. Also, the solar panels, you know, Western Cranston has a future. It has a future to be, it has a future to be the mecca of the city as far as the open space, as far as the rural area of our city. And we have to be very careful and cautious in what we do. And I don't know if solar panels there is the right message to send to the public. So I'll be voting against this ordinance based upon those two issues. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak before we... Okay, I'm going to comment on Councilman Arquette's comments. Having lived next to the Print Works for approximately 35 years, having my parents, my uncles work in the Print Works, you're right, it's a community. But it was a Print Works-oriented community. Now expected to be a community oriented around a new business going in there or several new businesses going in there. One of the hardest things that ever happened to the people in that area is when the Print Works closed because they all lost their jobs. They used to walk to work. My mother worked to work. My uncle walked to work. If we can create jobs that bring people in a community back together again, we're accomplishing something. As far as the smell, they use scrubbers today. This is not 30 years ago. There is no smell. I think maybe you should have taken the tour, Councilman, before you made up your mind exactly what it was. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
No.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Allen?
No.
Councilman Osito?
No.
Yes.
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 Oh, we've got to do the definitions. Yes, I'd like to move reconsideration of 7...
17-1504.
7-1504, yes.
Second.
Seven.
All right, is there a second on that motion? Two seconds. Second. Motion made second. I need discussion. All right, no discussion? Can you explain what the motion to reconsider is?
That's the solar panel definition, right?
Well, it means we vote again on...
Do you want the clerk to... Yeah, clerk, please tell us what we're voting on. It's getting awful late.
Councilman Stikos wants to reconsider that the previous ordinance passed on definitions to make a further amendment to the alternative energy generation definition, is my understanding.
Everybody understand? I'm sure they do. Clerk, please take the roll. Before that, any comment on this from the public?
No.
No, it's okay. We're voting on a motion to reconsider, right? Yep. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Adams?
Yes.
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 Yes. Councilman Stikos?
I'd like to amend the definitions under alternative energy generation to remove the words "or" solar collecting or concentrating array, and remove the word sunlight, and insert the word "or" between windmill and hydroelectric unit. I need a second.
Oh, second. Any discussion on this motion? All right, hearing done. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Allen?
Yes.
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 Just for clarification, Councilman Stikos, your original amendment on that definition, when we considered it stands, which was the removal of the words "or" from biomass?
Right, that continued.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, that passed.
Okay. Are we all, do we wrap this up yet? Can we move on? Move on to Finance Committee?
Do we have to vote on the definitions as amended, I think?
We have to vote on the definition as amended. Any discussion on the definitions as amended? Hearing done. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Can we, all right, move on to Finance Committee at this point, I believe?
Yes, Finance Committee. The first item on the finance agenda is the establishment of a tax incentive program for industrial properties. It was unanimously approved by the Finance Committee. Motion to approve?
Second. Motion made second. Any discussion on this motion? Councilman Stikos?
Yeah, I did vote against, for this in committee, I'm going to vote against it. I, now, I've thought about it. I don't, I think there is a problem in that the purchase price of property is included in this tax incentive. I think Councilman Santa Maria said something to the effect of, well, if they're going to invest so much, so many million, then they're going to create jobs, which I agree with. However, if it's one company buying another company, the way this is written, they could, I think the threshold is 12 million or 10 million?
12.
12 million. They could pay 11 million for the property, throw a million into renovations, and they'd be eligible for the tax credit. So that's one reason. And the other reason is, frankly, I don't have a lot of confidence in this city's economic development effort. It seems that we kind of run around and grab anything that's possible, whether it's a yoga studio, or a restaurant, or a foot surgeon. And I think we're, I think we're just, we're giving away money that probably would be spent to encourage development that would probably happen anyway, and that's the position of the head of the Chamber of Commerce also. Thank you.
Yeah, no. Councilman Santa Maria?
Steve, I just want to, and I agree with you, but I know you and I worked really hard to make sure that in the old part of this ordinance, because this is an addition, that jobs would be added, and that wasn't touched. So that's why I voted for this, because they didn't touch the other part, which we worked hard to make sure that there was a constant job addition each year, so.
Any other discussion, Councilman Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I mean, whether someone spends 11 million to purchase and then throws another million into the property, do we really care if they're going to spend that kind of money to buy in Cranston and to develop industrial land? In tying it to jobs, of course we want job creation, but if you spend 12 million to expand, I doubt that you're going to keep it as an empty space. And I would think that, you know, we're going to, you know, we have some safeguards, but to put too many restrictions or too many requirements on that, just remember 38 Studios. That was exactly what they did wrong. They said, "You have to create so many jobs with this money." So they went out and they just spent it all. Now, we're not giving these people any, we're not giving any money, but I don't really see it as a problem if we're going to, if somebody puts 11 and adds another million in renovations. So I mean, I will support it. I think it's a great addition to what we already have for tax incentives.
Any other discussion? Hearing done. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Stikos?
No.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
Councilman Allen?
Yes.
Councilman Osito?
Yes.
Councilman Ross?
Yes.
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 Okay, the next item is the fourth quarter transfers. That was approved unanimously by the Finance Committee. That was approved unanimously by the Finance Committee.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion, Councilman Vasquez?
I voted for the transfers. I just, I just would like to know why we have a charter thing or an ordinance that says they must occur in the fourth quarter, and yet we did it last week. I mean, I know he's, Director Strom's been shorthanded and whatnot, but I mean, I can remember previous councils, though, that, you know, and I know Director Strom did it, I just don't understand it, though. That's it, so.
Well, I mean, just what you said is exactly what happened. Number two, we've never done it in the fourth quarter, ever. It's always been done...
Maybe this administration hasn't, Director, but previous administrations have.
No, they haven't.
Yes, they have.
Well, if they have, point it out to me.
I served on councils where we did it.
And you're telling me that we're done in the fourth quarter?
Absolutely.
No. This administration hasn't, we've never had an issue. Deficits in those areas in those years, too.
But it just, it doesn't make sense to me, Director, that, then, or to members of the council, we need to either...
It seems funny, Councilman...
Put that charter amendment to get rid of it and give another deadline, or get rid of it, because I mean...
It seems funny, Councilman, that you and I had a discussion on the phone, and there was no issue, now all of a sudden there is.
I'm not saying, Director, I'm not saying there is, because I understand, but why, I guess, my issues with why we have a charter amendment, or something in the charter that says fourth quarter transfers should be made in the fourth quarter, and we don't do it, that's all.
You understand?
If that's the case, then maybe we can get that on the ballot to rectify it.
Any other discussion? Councilman Stikos.
Could I just follow up on Councilman Vasquez's point? Could I ask the clerk to do some historic research on when the fourth quarter transfers were done? Because I've been told the same thing that Councilman Vasquez said, is that they used to be done in the fourth quarter, as the charter says.
Through the chair. I didn't particularly research this, but in a conversation I had with Mr. Moretti last week, I happened to look at the prior fourth quarter transfers from the past two fiscal years, and historically, they have been done within the fourth quarter. However, the last two fiscal years were done beyond the fourth quarter. My recollection was, and I can confirm, this one was done in July, and the other was in September. The last year's was in September, so they were outside that. But historically, they have been.
I would agree with Mr. Strom, but while I've been on the council, I don't think they've ever been done...
Since I've been Finance Director, Councilman, they've never been done.
All right. Well, I'm wondering about before the administration...
And also, how can you be doing fourth quarter transfers when you haven't closed out the fiscal year? How do you know what you're gonna transfer?
Well, I think that's another discussion, but I think we need some facts, and we need to know whether that has ever been done. And if it hasn't been done, that's a whole different story than whether it should be done.
I'll specifically research. As I said, I was looking back, my recollection is it has been, but Mr. Strom could be right, my memory isn't what it used to be. I will research that for the council and get back to you. How far back do you want, would you want me to go?
Nineteen ninety-eight.
Well...
Ten years?
I would say, Councilman...
Actually, if...
Councilman Sepey is the one who told me that they were done...
If the committee, if the council wishes to go on to other business, I can quickly go down and look on my computer.
Oh, I don't think, I don't, I'm not asking for it tonight.
I can do that, it'll only take me ten minutes.
Well, I'm not asking for it tonight, and I don't think it affects this vote tonight. I also have a question for the administration, I guess for Mr. Coop. When the last budget was passed, the one that we're in the current year, the mayor vetoed the sidewalk, hundred thousand dollars for sidewalks, and there was a, there were discussions about using the supplemental budget process in order to partially fund the sidewalk repair program, too. And there's no money in this proposal for sidewalks. Wonder if you could talk about sidewalks?
Let's just, let's just read together. All right, let's get it over with. We're gonna be here for curfew. Councilman, any discussion about that, transferring money into that sidewalk program was intended to be a discussion of a fourth quarter of fiscal year two thousand sixteen transfer. This applies to fourth quarter of fiscal year two thousand fifteen. So, if there is money, if there is a surplus, then that's where that conversation would be relevant, once we're looking at the fourth quarter of this fiscal year.
Councilman Vasquez?
I kind of thought that when we did the budget, we put a small amount in there someplace. As one of the amendments, perhaps? I mean, I know it's late, and everybody's brain's fried, but I thought that we did put a small amount in there.
Councilman Stikos, you have an answer there?
Yes, we put in a hundred thousand for sidewalks, but the mayor vetoed it, and then the veto override failed, five to four.
Point of information?
Yes, Councilman Aketos. Point of information, Council President, does the council work under a curfew? Is there a rules curfew? And if so, what is that?
Twelve o'clock.
I was just looking up that rule, as I recall, it's midnight.
Is it midnight? I just wanted, thank you, Council President.
I'm verifying that.
All right, thank you, Council President.
We could order pizza and stand till one.
Let's just keep, let's work fast.
Any other discussion concerning this? Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 You're tired.
Yes. Okay, the next is a ordinance ratifying the school committee's agreement, contract agreement with the custodians' union.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion on this motion? Okay, clerk, please take the roll, so the school committee can go home.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Next is the real estate tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made to approve is a second, any discussion, hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Next is motor vehicle tax abatements as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion, hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
The England's up seven.
Yes. Yet, next is the waiver of interest on tax payments recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion, hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Last is denial of requests for waiver...
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion, hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Claims Committee, Chairman Favecchio.
Yes, thank you, Council President. We settled seven claims, I won't bore you with the details, they're in the docket.
Thank you. Public hearings, anybody from the public speak on any matter, docketed or undocketed. No to speak, thank you very much. Election of city officials, advice and consent. John W. Wiggins reappointed to Conservation Commission, term ending October twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Is there a motion? Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
With Constance ago.
Yes. With Constance.
Yes. Public Library Board of Trustees, Roberta Costa, reappointed, term ending July twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Julie Colangelo, reappointment, term ending July twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Juvenile Hearing Board, Louis Ritchie, member, reappointment. Motion approved. Term ending December first... Second. ...two thousand eighteen. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Pamela Schiff, alternate reappointment, term ending December first, two thousand sixteen. Councilman Bots. Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Mary Jo Hines, member, reappointment, term ending December first, two thousand eighteen. Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Judy Fox, alternate reappointment, term ending December first, two thousand sixteen. Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Julia Bay, alternate appointment, term ending December first, two thousand sixteen. Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Yes. Zoning Board of Review, Lori Collino... Motion approved. Second, alternate appointment. Motion made in her second.
Yeah, second.
All in favor? All right. Any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Paula McFarlane, fourth alternate reappointment, term ending July twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen. Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Report of city officers, are there any reports?
No, there are not. The one we had from Mr. Mason was emailed to the council in response to the trash program.
Executive Communications, report on hiring a special counsel, et cetera. Is there any reports from the administration?
That report was emailed to the members of the council, I have a copy available if anyone would like to see it.
Request to be continued in service, one year, you wanna hear a lap part of it?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a request of Deputy Chief Herbert Bassett, Cranston Fire Department, having, anticipating reaching his fifty-sixth birthday, has requested to be continued in service for one year. We've received documentation indicating that he is eligible and recommend approval.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Mr. President, I have a letter from Captain Robert Ryan, Cranston Fire Department, who anticipates reaching his fifty-sixth birthday, and has requested to be continued in service for one year. We've received documentation, he's eligible for continuation and recommend approval.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second, any discussion? Hearing done, clerk, please take the roll.
Congressman Stikos?
Yes. 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 Yes.
And, Mr. President, Captain Richard Bedard of the Cranston Fire Department, anticipating And, Mr. President, Captain Richard Bedard of the Cranston Fire Department, anticipating reaching his 56th birthday, has requested to be continued in service for one year. I have documentation indicating his eligibility, and recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion here? Hearing nine clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Claims settled by the solicitor. That's informational. Just take a glance at it. No action is needed. Council President, communications. I'm tired, and I want to go home. Also, member communications. Councilman Santa Raya.
I am, too, so I want to be quick. The administration report, the billboard sites, do we need a permit for billboards or not?
Yes, we do. Billboard applications are considered by the zoning board of review. They're allowed only in M1 and M2 zones. They are a use by right in M2 zones if they have a maximum area of 500 square feet, or 300 square feet in M1 zones. Otherwise, they require a special permit. I don't know the application fee, but it is a one-time permit fee when they apply for approval.
Can I have a copy of that?
I'll be happy to get that for you.
Also, the utility street openings, Councilman Favickio and I had asked why all the streets in Garden Hills were half-paved after the Providence gas project, and the administration told us that they were going to talk to the utility about doing the whole street. But it doesn't look like they're doing anything, so I don't know what the word is on that. Are they, or are they not doing the whole street?
The word I have from Director Mason, we're talking about scenic thistle, carnation, Cool Spring, that area.
There's Mountain Laurel, there's where your mom lives. There's a bunch of them.
Okay. The permits that were issued to National Grid to do the work in these streets required them to mill and overlay the area from the trench to the gutter line, which is about half the street. In many cases, it looks like approximately one-third of the road was paved. According to our Public Works Department, they have done an excellent job in repaving, and there's no plan to have them repave the entire street.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah.
Introduction to business. I'm just going to read the proposed number of the ordinance and the committee that's being referred to, as it's listed on the docket. Proposed ordinance 11-1501, this is a multi-hazard mitigation plan to be referred to ordinance on December 17. Proposed ordinance 11-1502, amending Title VIII, stagnant water, mosquito control to be referred to ordinance on December 17. Proposed ordinance 11-1503, amending the zoning performance standards for solar power to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 17. Proposed ordinance 11-1504, in amendment Title 13, water service system to be referred to Public Works for hearing on December 7. November 11-1505, amending the fiscal, the capital budget for the fiscal year 2016 for the use of impact fees to be referred to finance for hearing on December 17. Proposed ordinance 11-1506, amendment of chapter 17.
Clerk, can I pull six and seven?
Thank you.
I'm going to pull six and seven, Council President.
Resolution, proposed amendment to the Home Rule Charter, section 3.19, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on December 17. Petition for abandonment proportion of Kensington Road to be referred to Public Works for hearing on December 7. The following claims to be referred to claims for hearing on December 7. These are all property damage claims. Verizon from an incident on August 19, 2015. Ripda from alleged incident on September 1, 2015. Gerard San Angelo Jr. from alleged incident on October 20, 2015. Richard and Lisa Frusher from alleged incident on February 14, 2015. And that is all new business.
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Stichos?
Yes.
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 Yes. On the council member communications, we're going back to that. Councilman Stichos.
Yes, I did get the update. That's the third item, so I just have, like, an update on the first two items.
With regard to 124 Grand Avenue, inspectors have responded and researched multiple times regarding this house. They have found everything to be in compliance, and do not have any reason to go back and do any more investigation, although apparently a neighbor seems to think there is something else going on there, but inspections have found no evidence of that.
I just want to say again that this gentleman filed four specific complaints, and if the decision of inspections is that he doesn't have a leg to stand on, he should get an answer indicating that he filled out the complaint form.
I will ensure that he gets a response.
Yes, I also, just so you know, on the recommendation of Evan Kirshenbaum, who was looking into it, he suggested I call Steve- Yeah, Marcella. I always want to call him Marola. Marcella. And Steve told me he would look into it also.
And the other question was Ninth Arm Trail.
Right.
Yeah, Director, I'm sorry, Director Lapola has indicated that there's been, that you and you were in a meeting at the resupplant?
Yes, there's supposed to be a final application submitted.
The application has not yet been submitted.
Do you know why?
That I don't know.
All right, because I don't, I mean, it's, I think that needs to be done quickly, because DEM is in the process of changing its rules, and it's to our benefit to get the application in under the old rules, rather than the new rules. I couldn't explain the specifics, but Mr. Lapola could. Okay, thank you. It's all set for me.
Okay, Councilman Akado.
Thank you, Council President. I'll cut to the chase and be to the point. I just need to know if there's any coordination between the administration and Providence Water and National Grid. For example, a couple of years ago, Dyer Avenue was paved. I have word from neighbors that's saying that either Providence Water or National Grid is trucking the street, ready to do work on the street. So, I was wondering, is there any type of messages or communication that Providence Water or National Grid give the city that they would do unpaved streets before they work on newly paved streets? Director?
There is, in routine maintenance. However, I don't know what the circumstances are, if these are services that need to be upgraded, or if there's some issue like that. But I do know that there is coordination when National Grid comes in, or Providence Water, for that matter, and tells our Public Works Department they're going to be seeking permits to, they need a permit to open the street. But I will check. I don't know the specifics of Dyer Avenue. I'll have to look into that.
The question I'm asking is, so National Grid will give you a request for permits to do work on streets, and Providence Water also. So, hopefully, this city would respond by, after the work is done by those companies, then paving should commence. So, therefore, if National Grid or Providence Water hasn't done any work on A, B, C, D, E, F, G streets, those streets should be, I guess, in some type of limbo, as far as should they be paved or not? Because it seems like, once the city paves a street, then National Grid comes in, or Providence Water comes in, tears up the street, we start at square one again, and wasted about $300,000. And that's my concern. So, if you're telling me this coordination, that's great. Maybe we should, you know, get on this a bit more.
Sure. Of course, if we're looking two years back, we may not have an indication, two years, that a utility needs to dig up a street two years from now. But as much as possible, yes. Ken Mason is looking for every opportunity he can to save our streets.
Okay, Councilman Botts. Oh, thank you. Councilman Favickio.
I have a question on that lawsuit on 15 Capuano, but I don't know if there's anything there.
I did, just real quickly, I did speak to South Koshy about that, and he can impose the non-utilization tax, however, it would be next year. So, it's part of the annual tax roll, so when he does the tax roll next year, that's when it would be put into place.
And I'd also like to see it go to litigation, too, if possible.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
Okay, thank you. This lady has business on the clerk's desk. Any other council member communications? No? Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to know how we're doing with the ice rink.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Councilman Sepe, continue.
Yeah, how are we doing, Bob?
Okay, Phil. Fiscal year '15, the revenues were $701,853. The expenditures were $658,065. Generated a surplus of $43,700 and change.
Are we on track for '16?
For '16, two things in '16. Right now, '16, the operating revenue so far through mid-November was $212,000, and our expenses were $168,000. If you looked at the report, it also includes the insurance money that we received, so I back that up, and also what we paid Yaden for the bubble. And I just want everybody to know that the bubble is up now, the new bubble. There are some work being done inside, but it should be, they should be pouring ice, and it should be ready to go within a week to 10 days, max.
That includes all the league monies, and the public skate monies, and everything?
Yes. Also, I want the council to know that when I go before the insurance adjuster for the last time, that'll include business interruption insurance, which is the loss of revenue. So, we should be getting that, too. That could be another $40,000 also.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Any other council communications? Thank you. The next council meeting will be December 31, 2015. It's our motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, God. We're all adjourned.